Without further ado, let us call tonight's meeting to order. We have a lovely crowd tonight. Thank you all for coming. And we'll just, can you hear me? All right. And we'll just, as you're doing right now, just with so many people in a very small room, even small whispers become large voices. So if you can, just do what you can to remain calm, quiet throughout this. And of course, we will have public comments section or session, and we will take public comments in due course. So let me get started with first some opening statements. We'll do roll call, and then we'll go to the pledge and then get on to the items. All right. Before we begin, I would like to state that the Planning Commission hearings and meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. Note that all meeting or hearing information can be found on the Town of Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the Board of Trustees about land use matters in the Town of Monument, and each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review. This includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in the matters before us tonight, please speak now. Additionally, for those who are attending public, sorry, excuse me. Additionally, for those who are attending tonight's public hearing via Microsoft Teams, if you wish to speak during a public portion, please ensure that you utilize the option to quote "raise your hand" in the application and have your computer microphone ready to turn on. Please speak directly to the Commission into the microphone so that your concerns are heard and to ensure a timely and fair hearing. And we ask that it be, that any public comments might be limited to three minutes. We will have a clock on that. And that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak to that comment. That's just for a time concern. So this concludes the introduction. And what we'll do next is go to the roll call. I'll turn to staff.
Commissioner Danny Owers, I see that he is online.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Eric Light?
Here.
Commissioner Sean Zernico?
Here.
Commissioner Kathy Green, here. Commissioner Ray Egley?
Here.
Commissioner Tony Peck?
Here.
Vice Chairman Martin Trujillo?
Here.
Chairman Chris Wohomey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. And let's go ahead and if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a free republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so the first item for us is a review and approval of the prior Planning Commission meeting minutes. And if any one of my fellow Commissioners would like to make a motion regarding the minutes, please go ahead now.
I move to approve the minutes from the September 14th, 2022 Planning Commission meet, Planning Commission hearing.
A second.
Commissioner Danny Owers?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Sean Zernico?
Yes.
Commissioner Kathy Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tony Peck?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Martin Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Chris Wohomey?
Yes.
Pass at seven to zero.
All right, our next item will be the first item for public hearing and recommendation. And first things first, we turn to staff on the item DA dot six nine dash 2022 underscore Monument Junction West Lot Five Prelim Final PUD. With staff?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As you know, tonight, we have a full agenda. Sean Snow with Jacobs Engineering will be making all of the staff presentations tonight. I've given you a copy of the bylaws and rules for the Town of Monument Planning Commission. So at this time, Sean Snow will make his presentation.
Good evening to everyone, thank you. My name, as Mike mentioned, is Sean Snow. I'm a planner with Jacobs Engineering and have been working intently on all of the proposals before me that I'll be presenting tonight. I'm a urban planner, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. And so I will proceed with the first presentation. Of course, this evening, we're looking at Monument Junction West Lot Five, the preliminary Just a minute here. There we go. Here we have the site along the west side of Jackson Creek Parkway, south of State Highway Go over the existing zoning for the site. It's June 15th of 2020. The Board of Trustees approved the Village Sketch Plan Development. This approved sketch identified the project area as a multifamily area with 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre. Sketch plan, the Sketch PD Plan from the town's previous land development code describes it as a conceptual version of the preliminary PD site plan in preliminary fashion. The Sketch PD Plan indicates the proposed uses and densities of the property, including open space, parks, regional trail corridors, and major planned roadways and utility services. February 7th, 2022, Board of Trustees approved Resolution Number 08 dash 2022, a resolution approving a preliminary final plat for Monument Junction West filing number one. Just to give them a little more background on how that proceeded, Monument's Land Development Code, Section 18 dot 01 dot 310 discusses site-specific development plans that are subject to vested property rights, which include approval of a final PD, approved conditional use site plan, or approved final subdivision plat. In this case, we were referencing the approved plat from February 7th, 2022, which allowed the applicant to proceed to the stage we're at this evening, which relates to this PUD. Other existing zoning in this area includes the Woodmore Water and Sandation District that will provide both water and wastewater services for all the development within Monument Junction. And other existing surround uses include the YMCA, I-25 on the west side, vacant land to the south, and the remainder of the undeveloped Monument Junction parcel on the east side of Jackson Creek. Preliminary final PD will get a presentation this evening that will go into more detail. There are lots of small words on this, but the preliminary final PD does cover the 264 multifamily units on the site and includes the other amenities associated with those buildings, such as clubhouse, pool, tenant storage, 11 residential units in all. Each building is three stories and has 24 units each. There are a little more detail in there, but I'll allow the applicant to go into those details since we have lots on our agenda this evening. This site plan gives access points along Jackson Creek, including streets called Fat Tire Drive and Oktoberfest Drive that will connect right to Jackson Creek. Of course, the aspirational document, our comprehensive plan. We tried to conform to aspects of the comprehensive plan. That's what this outlines here. This first policy, which allows for a wider array of land use types to meet changing community needs. The variety in residential density type, lot size, and price point proposed will expand the options, housing options in Monument. In particular, there are insufficient housing options in the Town of Monument to meet growing workforce demand. The proposed multifamily will provide a more affordable housing alternative to serve the growing area workforce. Next policy from our comprehensive plan, promote infill development on vacant land with attention to the vacant or underutilized land in and around the downtown core. The proposed development of this vacant and underutilized infill site located less than a mile east of downtown core of Monument will diversify land use in the town and provide much-needed housing options. Next is an opportunity with the 2,389 gross acres of land available for development. The future land use plan provides an opportunity to move from single-use developments to a mix of complementary land uses. These uses can be developed into various activity nodes, thereby ensuring an appropriate balance of live, work, and play environments. The preliminary final PUD identifies the use as multifamily. This, together with the commercial uses, provides a mix of complementary land uses that provides a balance of live, work, and play environments. And of course, the next presentation with Burger Works will, is related to this very issue of mixed use. Kichun Yon, plan developments provide more amenities than traditional zoning in return for greater flexibility. This is typically in the form of parks, open space, and trails. When approving plan developments, we look at ways to locate dedicated land and trails to connect with existing parks, trails, and usable open space. For this development, the proposed development incorporates a loop trail. This will connect to the remainder of the development through a network of interconnected trail corridors. These trails and internal sidewalks will also provide non-motorized connectivity to adjacent developed areas by directing pedestrians to Jackson Creek Parkway's signalized intersection. Our staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of Monument Junction West Lot Five Preliminary Final based on the findings that the preliminary final PUD is in conformance with the review and approval criteria from the Town of Monument's Land Development Code, Section 18 dot 03 dot 450 and 18 dot 03 dot 460. Just go over the entire process briefly. This slide, it was a request to understand the process. That's essentially what I've outlined on here in the presentation, which highlights the date the Sketch PUD was approved in 2020, as well as the plat from February 7th earlier this year, which brings us to the PUD case we're hearing this evening. Staff, utilize the sections of the town code that I just referenced to understand during our review and approval process, the criteria set forth in the town's development code. This is 18 dot 03 dot 450. I won't go over all of these, but this is in our town code. And that continues on there. And then, of course, 460, the final PUD review and approval criteria I set forth in the town code. Lots of words there, so of course, I don't expect everyone to read through all of that, but it is in our town code. That's the presentation on our first applicant this evening. Are there questions for staff?
So just to keep order, we'll take the applicant's presentation immediately following. We'll hold as well on public comments. We have a portion dedicated to that, but for right now, is the applicant here with it? Yep?
Yes.
All right.
I will call up the presentation shortly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Barlow here, representing Alliance Residential, who are the applicants on this portion of the Monument Junction project. I don't have the clicker, so I'm going to have to ask Mr. Snow to forward my slides for me. Awkward, but.
I'm going to call up your presentation now.
Can you hear me now? Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, so we're here to talk about Monument Junction Lot Five. So next slide, this slide provides some site context, and I think it's important to try and picture Monument Junction in its entirety. So we've already been to Planning Commission with Monument Junction Phase One, which is on the east side of Jackson Creek. That preliminary PUD, preliminary and final PUD plan has been approved. Phase One plat has been approved, I believe the filing two, filing two plats is before you this evening. In addition to that, as was mentioned by Mr. Snow, there is a plat for the entire property that was approved on the west side. So that divided the property up into the various lots that you can see on the, on the west, and the lot we're talking about today is Lot Five. The lots one through four to the north of this parcel are planned to be commercial development, and we'll be hearing in the next item about Lot Four, which is the planned Whataburger. To the south is Lot Six, which was a parcel identified as some sort of commercial mixed-use community service type use, non-residential. Tract A is a large detention pond that has been increased to actually incorporate a park. So that is going to be a combined park and detention pond for stormwater detention pond. And then on the south end, and this, this plan is, has been submitted to the town and is currently under review for the Midtown Collection, which is a single-family detached, but higher-density development for, for classic homes. So this is the entirety of the Monument Junction development as currently planned. So most of these plans are in, in the works, in, under, have been reviewed or under review. And I, I thought it was important to show this overall context. And one thing I want to bear in mind in the context of some of the comments that are going to come up, probably from neighbors, we've had, we've had a meeting with Save Monument Group to discuss their concerns, and one of their concerns relates to kind of the bulk and massing of the buildings against Jackson Creek Parkway. And I, I do want to come to that in the presentation, but I just wanted to, to understand that that is, represents about 25% of the boundary. So the boundary of Lot Five adjacent to Jackson Creek Parkway is approximately 25% of the entire length of Monument Junction that abuts Jackson Creek Parkway. So it's not for the entirety of that, that adjacency to Jackson Creek Parkway that these buildings will be located. It is for 25% of that entire length of the boundary adjacent to Jackson Creek. So the northern part will be commercial, so they will be smaller-scale buildings with parking. And the Lot Six will probably be similar. And then on the south end, the Midtown will be a more residential feel of development. And then Tract A obviously is going to be open space and detention. So I just wanted to provide the overall context for Monument Junction. Next slide. So to give you some background on the zoning, I'm just going to go over some things, just so we understand where we started and how we got here. So this property in its entirety was originally zoned under Regency Park as PCD, which is planned commercial development. So the original intent was that this whole area would be commercial. We came forward with a sketch plan. Oh, sorry, just next slide. That was changed in 2020 when the zoning code was changed. So your zone, town zoning code was changed, and they re-named or reclassified PDs to PUDs. That was after we were rezoned to PD in 2020. So I, I just want to talk a little bit about our criteria. Mr. Snow set them out in some detail. There are a lot of overlapping criteria between the preliminary plan and the final plan. So the final plan, the criteria tend to go into a bit more detail, but generally speaking, these are the main items that are covered and represented. So it's, is it in keeping, number one, is it in keeping with the approved sketch plan? Are there quality and functional open spaces or parks and trails provided? School and dedications are addressed, provides a benefit to the town? There's a variety of development and housing types, appropriate relationship between use areas, both on and on off, off the site? And circulation is designed so that the traffic can circulate safely and conveniently and provide adequate site access? Phasing plan is appropriate. Water and sewer can be provided. All of the utilities are available. The design is sensitive to any major environmental characteristics. I was, I was saying now that this site doesn't have any major environmental characteristics. We addressed it at the sketch plan. We went through quite a detailed visual and environmental analysis. There are some existing drainage corridors that has, that has obviously been picked up in the detention pond that we're proposing on the site. And the other measures, there's a detention pond on the east side as well, suitable for the intended uses and compatible with the neighbor, neighboring properties, won't have any negative impact on existing or future development in the surrounding area, and it's consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. So some of those I'm going to focus on tonight. If you've got any questions on any of the others, I'm happy to address them. We do have, obviously, water and sewers available from Woodmore, Water and Wastewater District, all of the utilities are available. We have done, and I'm, I'm looking, when I'm addressing these criteria as well, I'm looking at the Monument Junction project in its entirety, because clearly there are some aspects of the overall criteria and objectives of this mixed-use development, such as the parks and what have you, which are addressed in other components of Monument Junction, not in this specific plan for, for the apartments for Lot Five. So just to give some background, next slide on the approved sketch plan. So there were a mix of uses proposed, and that was the basis of the PD zoning at the time, that we're going from a purely commercial zoning to a mixed-use zoning. The area in, in kind of brownish color that you see on the north side and then going along the east, west side of the site in a kind of linear fashion, was the area identified for multifamily residential. It was 12.7 acres, and we showed a density of 15 to 25 units per acre. The maximum density was 25. That was discussed at Planning Commission. It was discussed at the board, and there was no discussion of actually reducing that. We, we talked about why that was appropriate, and that was accepted by Planning Commission and the board. We had a range in there, because at that time, we did not know what type of product would be going into that area. As we will see in the next slide, the configuration of the site has changed slightly. So the red in, on the sketch plan was the commercial, and the blue area was proposed as mixed use. So next slide. So this slide shows the filing one plat, which was approved in February this year. So that showed a different configuration for the site. So Lot Five is the area we're looking at for the multifamily to date. So the site, the size of Lot Five has reduced from the area of the multifamily that was originally anticipated in the sketch plan. That was 12.7 acres. Now we're looking at about 10.7 acres. Part of the reason for that is, as you can see, the roads here, both on the north side of Lot Five and on the south side of Lot Five have been platted separately. So the sketch plan didn't anticipate, well, it just, obviously anticipated there would be roads internally, but it didn't know whether they would be platted separately or would be part of the actual plans of this development. So this is effectively a net area. So the 10.7 acres is net of any roads that are providing access to it, because they have been identified separately and platted separately and will be constructed by the developer. So the, as I mentioned before, the parcels to the north are identified as the future commercial lots, and I described the lots to the south already. And a lot of this discussion now will shorten my presentation on the next project considerably, because there's a lot of repetition, so. Next slide. So now we need to talk about the plan that's before you. So the plan that's before you is for apartments, as indicated, it's on a site that's just short of 10.7 acres. There are total dwelling units of 264 acres. So here, I just want to note that if we had taken the original 12.7 acres of the sketch plan and applied the 25 units per acre, that would have permitted 317 units. So we are providing 264 with this plan, which is slightly less than 25 units per acre, and is obviously significantly less than the original anticipated maximum. And if you take that as a net area, if you just apply the original, if you apply the 264 units to the original 12.7 acres that we had, obviously, that's been, the, the streets have been netted out of that, you're at around, just short of 21 units per acre, so it's slightly less. So the net, the net density based on the original acreage is, is less than 25 units per acre. I just wanted to point that out. So we've got a mix, a pretty, a completely even mix of one and two-bedroom units. The proposed building height is 43 feet. The maximum building height we're requesting is 50 feet. That is based upon the original zoning for the sketch plan. When we went through that, we indicated in our presentation that we anticipated a 50-foot height for the multifamily residential. That was in the presentation for the sketch plan. It was not specified on sketch plan, but it was in the presentation. And also, the piece, and the reason for that was the PCD zoning, the previous zoning allowed a maximum height of 50 feet. So that's the continued, continuation of that maximum height, but the actual proposed building height is 43 feet. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to a diagram, which I think will help. We are providing more than sufficient parking spaces per the code requirements, and that will be in a mixture of onsite spaces, parking spaces, as well as garage spaces, carports, and we're also providing the required parking for accessibility. Next slide. So I want to talk, next couple of slides, a little bit about setbacks. We did get some feedback about the setbacks, so I do want to touch on these. So we have a minimum setback, so bear in mind, these are minimums. So this is, represents our tightest point on the site. So along Jackson Creek Parkway, we have a 15-foot building setback. We have a 15-foot builds, building setback on the south and north, and they, on the north side, it also functions as a buffer, because there's going to be commercial to the north of that area. And then on the west side, we have a 25-foot buffer, but the actual distance of the buildings from the, it's the off-ramp, actually, at this point, the off-ramp of I-25 is 55 feet, because there is a utility easement there. So we have to step the buildings back to that red line on the plan, because that is a utility easement. So that, that, they are basically the constraints of the site that we have. And if we go on to the next slide, with the reason for our 15-foot setback, setback on, on Jackson Creek Parkway is really because of the southern building. It gets a little tight in that one location, and back to the actual building itself in that, at that point, it's about, just short of 20 feet. Our average building setback along that entire length is 23 feet. I want to pause here and talk about, there, there has been reference to the Regency Park standards applying here. They don't apply. We are no longer part of the Regency Park zoning. We rezoned from Regency Park back in 2020, when we changed to the PD zoning for the sketch plan. But I will point out that the Jackson Creek Parkway is a collector, is a major collector. And for a major collector, the required setback under the PCD zoning at that time would have been 20 feet. So our average is 23 feet along this boundary to the property line, and I think it's really important to note that it's to the property line, which is how we are required to measure a setback. Next slide. So this slide provides a little bit more of a perspective of what the building will, the relationship of the building to Jackson Creek Parkway in its, in the final form. And this is assuming the buildout of Jackson Creek into its ultimate condition. We will, to the building itself, we, we show the minimum setback, but the building is actually setback a little further, and the, the balcony's there are extending, so we have to, we measure to the balcony rather than to the building itself. And so there is actually an additional 33 feet to the curb from the setback to Jackson Creek Parkway. So the total distance from the building to the edge of the curb on Jackson Creek Parkway is, is 41 feet. So that is, it's, the, the suggestion was that we're 15 feet away from Jackson Creek Parkway, we're not. There is going to be a tree lawn. We are obviously going to have our own internal landscaping. There's going to be a sidewalk, a tree lawn, before you actually get to Jackson Creek. That, I just want to also talk here, to, to hear about the height of the building. So we are showing 43 feet as the maximum building height. That is to the peak of the roof. Per code, and actually, we have our own definition on this PUD for building height, which only varies slightly, but they are both consistent in that you measure to the midpoint of the roof for your building height. So the, the reality is that the actual building height per how it would be measured by our definition and by code would actually be more in the region of 36 feet per the actual measurement, because the, the distance from the, the top of the building to the top of per the actual measurement, because the, the distance from the, the top of the building to the top of the roof in easy terms is 12 feet, so it's six feet less than the actual peak. And that's how the building height is measured. And that's how it'd be measured when we get to building permits. So it's not measured to the very top of the roof, it's measured to the midpoint of a sloped roof. So I wanted to just cover two aspects there of some of the discussion concerns about height and concerns about the distance from Jackson Creek Parkway. We do have, we have seen the handouts that have been presented. So we may have some further comments in rebuttal depending on, on, on how they are referenced on the setback matters. Next slide. Here we have a couple of examples of the building elevations, they're different color schemes. So it's really just showing how there is some articulation in not only the design of the building, but in the color materials and color schemes that are proposed. They are stucco finishes with wood, so very fairly typical. And then the next slide really just shows a different color scheme options. So we believe that these are well-designed, attractive buildings that will fit in with, with this overall development, which again is a mix of single-family residential, low and high density, and also commercial uses. Next slide just shows the clubhouse elevations. There is a proposed clubhouse at the corner of Fat Tire Drive in Jackson Creek Parkway. It will have a pool and there will be other amenities such as fitness rooms, hot tubs, grills, fire pits and so on. And they will provide amenities for the residents of this development. Obviously, the park area that we've identified is going to have a broader use. It's going to be more of a public, it's going to be owned by the metro district. It's going to be available to the public for use, the parking tract A that I referenced earlier. Next slide. So wanted to talk a little bit about open space parks and trails. Obviously, it is a requirement, it's one of the criteria, but as I noted before, we are looking at it in the overall context of the Monument Junction as, development as a whole. As you can see, on the east side, we provide a park for the phase A, B and C area of, of the eastern side of Jackson Creek Parkway. And that's a kind of more of a linear and centralized part with linear trails and green space going towards it. And then we provide that connectivity at the proposed signalized intersections to cross over to Jackson Creek Parkway and then have a continuation of a trail that will go along the western side of the property adjacent to, in a, in a buffer, that's a 25 foot buffer. That was part of the sketch plan to provide trail connectivity through the development. And then the park, the proposed park is just to the south of the apartment. So it'd be conveniently located for the residents of these, of the future development. I just wanted to kind of recap a little bit. We went into this in some detail when we talked about the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway, the phase one of Monument Junction, about the proposed road improvements. So I just wanted to recap on these so everybody understands what's actually been planned. So it's planned to widen Jackson Creek Parkway. I think that's fairly well known now to four lanes, well, to four lanes with, with bike lanes and so on, and have that as a multimodal corridor. And I'll pause on that for a second to say that when we initially went with this plan to town staff and indicated that we were, we were looking at developing this for multifamily residential, they very much encouraged the bringing of the buildings up to Jackson Creek Parkway for a couple of reasons. One, they wanted the parking and all that activity concentrated internally within the site so it wouldn't be visible externally. And also to create more of a street scene along Jackson Creek Parkway and to create that better environment for that multimodal future of Jackson Creek. So it would help slow traffic down, it would help feel a better environment for cyclists and also for pedestrians. So with that, the master developer will be constructing improvements at the highway 105 and Jackson Creek Parkway intersection. There's a proposal for a full movement intersection at Fat Tire. Sorry, no, let me rethink. Yes, it is at Fat Tire. In fact, no, it's not, it's sorry. Can't remember which one it is now. Fat Tire is the northern one. Yeah, sorry, it is at Fat Tire. Laughing Lab is the northern one, Fat Tire is the southern. So at that intersection, there will be a traffic signal. So from that traffic signal north to the traffic signal at Jackson Creek and 105, there will be improvements, there will be widening, there will be additional turn lanes. There's a proposed additional turn lane, if you could go on to the next slide. There is a proposed additional turn lane off 105 to go south on Jackson Creek Parkway. So that is going to be constructed by the developer. There obviously will be improvements at each of the intersections along Jackson Creek Parkway to provide appropriate right and left turn movements. But in addition, there is, there's going to be the introduction of a dual, dual left turn going northbound on Jackson Creek Parkway onto 105, which will significantly improve traffic flow at that intersection, as well as a dedicated right turn lane onto highway 105 going east. And there will be a continual, so as you turn right onto Jackson Creek Parkway off 105, that will continue and, and then you will come into the right turn lane into, onto Laughing Lab Way, which is a right in, right out only. And then further south to Fat Tire where there will be a signalized intersection. Next slide, and this just shows the proposed improvements at those individual intersections. So they will be having dedicated right and left turn lanes as appropriate. Next slide, and then going down to the south side of lot five, Oktoberfest Drive. This is a right in, right out only, and there will be a southbound, right turn deceleration lane. So all those improvements will come in with this, with, to support this development. The improvements to Jackson Creek Parkway 105 will occur, have, I believe have been bonded now with or proposing to be, oh, I think that's been worked on right now, the agreement for the funding to put those improvements in place is taking place with the discussions on the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway for the development on that side. Next slide. Mr. Snow gave you a pretty comprehensive rundown of the policies, and I believe ours are pretty similar. I'll just focus on the aspect of this was identified on the comprehensive plan as a mixed use area, the entirety of Monument Junction, and that's how it's being planned in its entirety. So do we have a mix of uses on this particular lot? No, we have one component of the overall mix of uses that were planned as part of Monument Junction from the outset to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan. And with that, I would like to summarize. The, the PUD is consistent with the mixed use land use designation in the comprehensive plan, as noted. We are also proposing a land use that is entirely consistent with the sketch plan. So it's important to pause here and explain that my clients, when they were first looking at this site, were very intent on understanding the existing zoning. They are not in the habit of going into communities and rezoning property. They want to invest in properties that are already zoned for the uses that they are proposing, that have already been through the process, that are always, already been accepted by planning commission and the board or whoever the determining bodies are. And we went through a very detailed process. Is the density we're proposing appropriate? Yes. Is the height? Yes, that's consistent with what was originally planned. Is the use appropriate? Yes, the use was identified on the sketch plan. So all these aspects were thoroughly vetted at the outset. Are there any other parameters of the sketch plan that we need to consider? No, the only other thing was a 25 foot buffer requirement on the west side adjacent to the off ramp of I-25, which was a carryover from the original zoning, PCD, which required that buffer. And it was like, okay, we can move forward with this plan. We, we can move forward with this site and this is something we can commit to. So a lot of time, money and investment has gone into pursuing the plan based on that zoning. So we feel it has an appropriate relationship between the use areas within the site. So we've carefully kind of considered that relationship of moving from the commercial and that was part of the reason for the switch. That was the only thing we slightly changed from the sketch plan, which is intended to be conceptual. As Mr. Snow noted, it's a preliminary layout, it's conceptual. We pushed the commercial further north because that was considered the preferred location in terms of visibility and accessibility for the commercial. But it also provides a better progression of intensity of use as you move south on the site. So you've got the more intense commercial uses going to the multifamily, the one parcel, lot six, which was intended to be some sort of community use, the park, and then going to the lower, still slightly higher residential density than the east side, but lower than the apartment. So it provides that progression of density and intensity of use. And also there are no, the other aspect of my client's consideration are, are we next to any existing single-family neighborhoods? No, you're not, you're not, you're surrounded by undeveloped land. That is part of a planned development where multifamily was intended. You will have commercial to the north, you will have future single-family to the south, but you are not immediately adjacent to existing single-family residential. So we are providing adequate buffers to between, for use to use compatibility with the commercial to the north and also the buffer to the off ramp of I-25 to the west. The master developer will be constructing all the improvements needed to Jackson Creek Parkway to that first intersection with Fat Tire. Obviously, the rest of the improvements, other than the, the intersection improvements are going to be at the town's responsibility. That's part of their grant that they've requested and that will, future widening will be the town's responsibility, but certainly from the Fat Tire to, to 105 intersection, that is responsibility of the master developer and that significantly exceeds the amount of, the percentage of traffic increase from this development. The improvements are exceeding that, so it's more than their fair share of the improvements to Jackson Creek Parkway. And as I mentioned before, all utility services are available to the site. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, and just for, or thank you for your presentation. For the public, what's going to happen is the applicant will sit and listen carefully and take notes to your questions. At this time, we'll open up public comments, just coming up, one at a time. Again, we have three minutes per comment. If you hear someone make a comment that you wanted to make, don't be, don't feel anything other than that comment was made. We are trying to avoid repeat comments as well, just for the time and sake of time. But after the public comments portion closes, then we'll have an opportunity to have the applicant rebuttal to answering the questions. But this won't be a ping pong match or a tennis match of back and forth, all right? So what happens is the applicant will answer the questions and then we'll move on and close the public comment hearing. All right, and so with that, I will ask if any members of the public would like to come up. And when you do, please sign in, your name, your address, and then provide your comment, okay? So with anyone, and anyone online, I will also get to you, but we'll first go with the folks in-house right now. So I'll look to the folks in person, please, come on up.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Wagner. I own a house in Village Center. That is just east, just east of, I believe, phase B of this entire development. I've got a few questions here. I've noticed in the last week or two, they are digging down below ground level. They've got about five feet down from ground level. So when they say there is a 50 foot height requirement, is that 50 feet from the natural landscape? Or is it 50 feet as it's dug down? Do you understand?
Yeah, and again, this is a great question and the applicant will.
My concern is that it would set a possible precedent that is unacceptable to the citizens of Monument. Let's see here. I would like to know, how much is the rent going to cost for a two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment in this location? Are they going to be doing calculations for income for residents that can afford it? They have, they have said that they are interested in providing affordable housing. It is not affordable to go with market value. We would like to have more clarification on this issue. I'd like to know why they need a zoning change when the plan was already approved for a complete residential in 2020? I know that many of us were at that meeting. There was no mention of a fast food place. I believe that Jackson Creek cannot support that, that traffic. It's already a mess with Monument Academy. It's a ridiculous mess with Monument Academy. And if we can back this up to the whole project picture, if someone can back this up?
Yes.
To the entire project picture?
Sorry.
You can't do that?
Well, it has frozen.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get it back.
Okay, when we, when we get it back, take a, take a look at the density of the housing and look at, look at Village Center right next to it. I live in Village Center, in that little circle to the east of everything. There we go, that one. I live in Village Center in Woodmore. My house is about 10 feet apart from my neighbor's house. Probably no more than that. And looking at the density of this, why is this so much more dense than was already there? How, I mean, how, what are they going to be, two feet apart? I mean, it's, look at how dense that orange stuff is. It's really dense. And those houses you can see at Village Center, Woodmore, they're not.
All right, I'll.
I'm sorry?
We're at three minutes, I'll just ask you to conclude your comments, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Just to keep this moving, next, yeah, please.
About the entrance out of this area here. We live right there. Our back is to these orange things she just mentioned.
Side of Jackson Creek Parkway, so I already have.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's the, it's the traffic right next to 105. It's all from the school to 105, we sit and watch them waiting for the light. And that is going to be just a big traffic jam. And I want to show the people. We are, we're here and we just look at this. Here's 105 right here. Here is that exit out of this here, these orange things. It's going to be more than 20% more traffic, like maybe triple it.
Especially with the high schools.
Well, that's right, that's, there's, there's high schools, there's elementary and there's middle schools. All shoot, right at that corner.
All right. Thank you, and do you have any, any more comments?
Well, that, just worried about looking over those, we've had, it's so beautiful all these years.
Understood.
Only problem we had was tumbleweed.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Sharon Stratton. So I just wanted to reiterate what this woman just said. There are many times.
So yeah, two things, if you're just repeating her comment, we would just ask that, go ahead, but we'll just ask that comments be either new, but not, not so many repeats, okay?
Right.
And speak up.
So I'm trying to say that several days all come from, let's say, King Super to the light at where the Y is in West Palmer High School. And I've had to wait sometimes four or five lights just to get through the traffic there, then have to wait another four or five lights just to get through the traffic to 105. Just to, you know, you're waiting online forever. My other concern is water. Have they done a water report? Is there a report regarding the availability of water for all this building that's happening?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, did you sign in?
All right, yes, oh, well, we'll get her. And just so you know, when you come up, please sign in. All right. Next, anyone? Oh, there's nothing to sign in, oh. Oh, well, that's a problem. I know, all right. Getting worried here, okay, so please, next up, go ahead.
Trying to sign in. My name's Dan Showalter, and the, the comment or question that I have for both, uh, the, the planning staff and the applicant is the consistency of the proposed, uh, plan with the Town of Monument Comprehensive Plan. Yes, sorry.
Uh, consistency with the proposed plan and Town of Monument.
Man, there's a lot of demands. And the Town of-
Yeah, okay.
And the Town of Monument Comprehensive Plan, and there are specifically two items. Uh, the first, the planning staff said that this is consistent with preserving the view corridor to the west, uh, and noting the fifty foot height. I don't know what the height of the tallest building in Monument, but I, I would assert that this is close. Uh, so I have a question about that. And the second piece, and maybe I misunderstood your presentation, ma'am, but the comprehensive plan states that single structures should contain between four and six units per structure. And I think the one that I noticed, uh, on yours, list twenty four, so twelve single, or sorry, twelve one unit, or one bedroom, and twelve two bedroom.
Thank you, yep, thank you. All right, next up, anyone? Go ahead, yes. Oh, there we go.
I am Steve King. So myself and, uh, Save Monument met with Classic Homes and Mr. Stimple, and the meeting allowed us both to lay out our concerns on the table over this project. And we walked away with at least an understanding of where each side stands, even if we don't necessarily agree. The package I passed out that you have shows photos from the vistas with measurements to get perspective on building mass relative to street frontage. I apologize, some of the copies are not being clear. With that said, the original sketch plan had the apartments located on the northernmost portion of this property to minimize the impact of view corridors, per the landowner. They had also implied there would be a view shed analysis performed. This should always be required. A view shed analysis shows the impact of the building on existing views. That was never performed. The comprehensive plan states citizens remain concerned about the views one sees from the I twenty five corridor and views from the east side of I twenty five towards the mountains. In the sketch plan hearing, where the zoning was changed from commercial to high density residential, it was noted that commercial uses would be free of a hindrance in blocking the views and eliminating the view corridor to the west driving down Jackson Creek Parkway. Yet this apartment site has five buildings parallel to Jackson Creek Parkway, almost forty five feet high, with very little space in between the buildings, in essence, creating a fifty foot high wall along Jackson Creek, almost eight hundred feet long with no visibility towards the mountains. Commercial uses would have considerable space between the buildings and opening view corridors. There is no attempt to minimize the impact of these buildings as it was done in other similar apartment projects in town. The vistas sits over seventy feet from pavement on Jackson Creek Parkway. Monument Ridge has requirements in the PED that state minimum fifty foot setback from Baptist and thirty five feet from Struthers from the property line. Monument Junction itself has over forty foot setbacks on all the other sections, not including the right of way. What a Burger is probably seventy five feet from the pavement. These apartment buildings are out of character in terms with relationship to the road. It was stated that having buildings closer to the road was used as a means of slowing down traffic. Yet according to the traffic calming methods implemented by the United States Department of Transportation, the relationship of the building to the road isn't listed as a method for slowing traffic. This project, I'm sorry. In the meantime, remember this, according to the Colorado Land Planning and Development Law Guidance Manual, it states perhaps the most important aspect of the PED Act, however, is that it enables municipalities and counties wide discretion to negotiate almost every aspect of the proposed development in return for PED approval. In theory, the planned development process protects the public interest by trading off more flexible local government regulations for a higher level of forethought and design concern on behalf of the landowner. These words should always be considered in any land use hearing, as approval grants vested rights. The issues that I have are more of a package-
Ask you to just start wrapping up.
Okay, this will be it. The lack of adequate front setbacks, the lack of space between buildings, and the lack of step back building heights, opening view corridors, as required in the previous zoning and the comprehensive plan. Unless you can establish those conditions, perhaps, maybe you could postpone this until these issues can be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll continue with comments. Anyone, yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Um, I'm Doug Stimple, CEO of Classic Homes. We are the master developer, I'm also a Monument resident. Um, I wanted to address why we are in favor of this proposal. When, frankly, I'm a bit surprised that this is controversial at all. And when we bought this property, there was almost fourteen acre zone for multifamily. We've reduced that. It was allowable for up to twenty five units per acre. We're just below that. There was concern over, on our part, on the sketch plan, on the reason, there's been talk, Mr. King talked, alluded to how we've shifted the commercial to the north. In fact, if you looked at the original sketch plan, the multifamily piece came quite far south on the, on the west side of that property. The reason we did it is because those are, those are traffic generators. You want to have the traffic that are coming off I twenty five getting to the commercial, you don't want to pull them all the way down Jackson Creek Parkway. It's a more logical spot to put it. That's where the commercial wants to be. We have, we have met all the criteria that was in place. When we originally submitted, there was one letter of objection. We've held neighborhood meetings. No one objected, we platted the lots, no one objected. And now here we are, and I think we all know why it's controversial. And it's, it's because there's been quite a lot of controversy in Monument, and now everything's controversial. This is a good plan. You do not want your sea of parking to be fronting on Jackson Creek. That is protection of the view corridor. When you block some of the interior parking and, and garages, you're, you're giving attractive residences along the corridor, and you're blocking the parking. You make it sound like it's one continuous building, there's forty feet between building as we exist. That's a view corridor. There are other elements to this plan that are in strict compliance with that. We didn't ask for a deviation, we didn't ask for a variance. We have committed as the master developer to make on the front end more than our fair share. How's that defined? Your town hires a traffic engineer and they tell us what our build out and what we represent. And they say that interim, we're going to be twenty eight percent, long term, we're going to be twenty percent. Well, we said, it's a problem today. We acknowledge Jackson Creek Parkway is a mess today. We will fix it. It will be better after our development than it is today. We don't have one resident living there yet. If this apartment project gets approved and they break ground, it'll probably be fourteen to eighteen months, I would guess, before there's any meaningful number of bodies there. Everything that is there today is what they call background traffic. There's not one piece of traffic coming from our property. Why is a PED acceptable here? We're building a park inside a detention pond. We care about Monument. We've been continuously building here since nineteen ninety five.
We'll ask you to start wrapping up.
In conclusion, I'd just like to suggest that while I respect Mr. King's opinion, we're professionals, we do this for a living. It's what we do, and this meets the criteria for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next. All right, uh, public comments? Okay, all right, yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Aaron Keller. Um, my wife and I have lived here sixteen years, we love this area and want to thank your town. Um, I love the Fourth of July Parade, my daughter loves it. I love the Limbaugh Park concerts, I love sitting next to an eight year old guy and next to, you know, a six year old kid, and everybody's inclusive, and I appreciate about the Town, Town of Monument. So my biggest concern is I have two houses in Jackson Creek and I have one house in North Woodmore. I specifically want to live in this area because of the low density and the charm. And I just ask you from the bottom of my heart, once we do something, we can't take it back. Um, the views that are obstructed in Castle Rock, and I spend a lot of time there for work and various things, they're already done. And so I just ask you guys to think about it. And I agree with what a lot of people have said, and I think the amount of big projects, especially the apartments, are really worrying people. And from my end, having kids and a lot of friends with kids, we're worried about, like, the middle school's already super crowded and packed. And I was wondering, can, are the developers going to pitch in for a new middle school? Or some of the infrastructure for the schools? What's that plan, elementary school, that type of thing? Because my heart went out when you guys were talking about the traffic at Monument Academy, and my daughter doesn't go there, but I've heard horror stories about that. And that's one reason I think we all came from a lot of places was just that kind of small town atmosphere. And I think it's starting to erode, and that's, I just ask you guys to think about it. And it's a big decision, and I just hope you guys will take time, because you can always take more time. We just, once we do something, we can't take it back.
All right, any other public comments? Yes, please, come on up.
Temple one six one five one St. Lawrence Way. I will not, uh, try to add on to what Mr. King and other people had mentioned, but I will say that, um, not one resident has stepped up here and said that they want this development, that they concur with this development. That's first, only the, only the developers. This does not meet the comprehensive plan with the view corridors. Looking between forty foot buildings is not a view, it's a hindrance, plain and simple. My point with the traffic, think of a funnel cone and a spout. We're adding more traffic and volume to Jackson Creek going towards one oh five, which is already saturated. We already have major problems with other developments around the area that use one oh five, going up to Monument Academy and beyond. Now we're going to add more traffic density to that light, well, we're going to add a turn lane. You can add as much as you want. It's going on to a two lane road named one oh five that's not going to be expanded anytime soon. Jackson Creek Parkway is already saturated. Other development projects on Jackson Creek or adjacent to it are adding to the traffic being used on Jackson Creek. This is just going to aggravate it more. So I asked the, uh, planning commission, your job is to review all the PUDs. Think about the residents, the safety, and what's being put in, in our monument to meet the comprehensive plan goals. Small town charm, small town feel. This is exacerbating that, right? Um, lastly, we talk about the Water Burger. Great, we're going to have another fast food restaurant in Monument. That's going to be probably open twenty four seven. The traffic's going to continue coming off twenty five onto one oh five onto Jackson Creek. Another hindrance of the view, now you're going to have a sign that's going to be above that building that's going to affect residents that live near Jackson Creek, that, that's going to be, that view is going to be obscured with the neon light as well. There has been no talk about the future of a Maverick gas station that's going to go in there too. That's going to be the twelfth gas station that's going to go, and which is going to go onto Jackson Creek. That's being, that's going to be proposed. Twelve gas stations within a four mile radius, I have not seen anywhere in El Paso County, but we're going to put one there on Jackson Creek, which is going to further exacerbate. Unless I'm mistaken with, with the residents of Monument who are, who are craving gas station sushi takeout plates. I don't think we need that as well. So I, I ask you to look hard at that PED, what else is going to be proposed in there? Um, and think about what is going to happen if this is approved and this is built. Thank you.
It's three minutes on the dime. Um, any, anyone else here? We have some folks online that want to make some comments, so yes, please step forward.
Hi, Shannon Clark, eight zero one three two. Um, the last Board of Trustees meeting, um, I was at, many of us were at, and one of the, I think it was one of the planning commission members, um, was called in from online and, you know, really patted the planning commission on the back for the great job that you guys do, and, and you do a wonderful job. I'm not saying that you don't, but I think personally, my own opinion, if you want to keep saying that you do such a good job, I, I don't know if you'll be able to say that if you approve something like this.
All right, anyone else, uh, from the crowd? Okay, I'm, oh, all right, come on up.
Joe Lloydl, I'm president of Classic Homes. And I've lived up in the Monument area since, well, started was nineteen eighty four. Been in and out of the area, but I've been in the north end of town pretty much the whole time I've been here. Uh, so I do appreciate this town, and I do appreciate this area. I do want to talk about this topic of density, this is too dense of a property, of a project. It follows exactly what was approved back in twenty twenty, so we, we think that we've met that criteria. And it really shouldn't be on the table at this point. A comment was made, no one wants this development. I, I've been to a lot of these meetings, I don't think I've ever been to one where the neighbors show up and they want to develop it. It's every time, let's not put that here, I don't want to look at it, but no, I don't want to buy it to keep my view. I want, I want somebody else to leave it empty for me. So that's, no one ever wants to develop. Most of the people that live in here, there's a lot of people that I know that live in subdivisions that we built, that no one wanted that development either, but they're here now, and now they want anybody else to move in. We are making improvements to Highway one oh five. If you look at that map, there's quite a bit of improvements that are made to one oh five. I don't want to get into all the detail, but if you want to make that comment, you should look at what was actually on the, uh, on the plans before you make that comment. Um, small pop, I think small towns need, need diversity. We've got, everybody here wants to have everyone in, have that same house that they're in. We're going to end up in a situation here that's no different than a Del Webb community, where all of a sudden, everybody just ages out. Is that what we want as a community, be hea- to be healthy? I think we want young families and we want young people to be able to live here. I want my kids to be able to live here. I want them to be able to live in something they can afford. And right now, everybody's trying to exclude that, and I take offense to it myself personally. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, anyone else in the crowd that would like to make a comment on this matter? Yes, please.
Hi, Dave Dineen, uh, two oh three one five True Mister Circle, been in town for six years, love it here, never going to leave. Um, I'm not someone who will make a profit from this, and I think that from the perspective of any resident who's not going to make a profit from this, this is a ridiculous idea. It's just absurd. Um, putting in this many apartments on top of each other, it does not fit this town. It, it does not fit the layout of this town, uh, you know, aesthetically, from a traffic perspective, from a school's perspective. Um, it's, it's just absurd. We don't need affordable housing in Monument. The market will take care of itself. So I have.
Thank you. Who else, step up?
My name is Maren Stevens, and I'm going to be a little bit indirect here. About six years ago, I served on a land use committee for the school of Mon, uh, the District Thirty Eight. There's land all over the place, but one of these I remember was Pine Tree Properties with a post office box in Phoenix, Arizona. And I forget what the other side was, but anyway, uh, it'd be nice if these people that own all of this land could possibly give up some, some land for some schools. If we're going to have this kind of growth, we're going to need more schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the crowd like to make a comment? All right, I'm going to turn to the folks online. Where's our, okay, yes, I, yes, we do, and Drew is online, all right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here.
Thanks, all right, so if you can, um, I mean, I see a few, but like Ryan?
Yes, I just moved, uh, him up, Mr. Chairman, to you, whenever you're ready, just ask him to come off of mute.
All right, Ryan, can you come off of mute and give your comment?
Good evening, sir, my name is Ryan LeVere.
Good evening, sir. My name is Ryan Levere. I'm a citizen of Monument. I'd like for the planning commission to direct Mr. Foreman to not allow contractors to provide opinions and recommendations to the town. Contractors provide assessments and evaluate efficacy. Secondly, Jacobs Engineering stated that this project would provide much-needed housing options. Excuse me. The statement is objectively an opinion and prejudices the planning commission's decisions. Third, the development is, this development is 23% larger than the Thompson Thrift Residential Project that was approved earlier this year. That project had 20.09 units per acre, and that project had a dense, and this project has a density of 24.70 units per acre. TTR violated zoning density limits, and no one caught that. Lastly, to the planning commission, seven land use applications in one night violate Town Municipal Code 1.18.140. After this presentation, if you hear any other applications, you'll violate Town Municipal Code that states no more than two applications for review of major subdivisions or planned developments. If you hear all seven land use applications tonight, you're likely going to be here until 1:00 AM in the morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Drew, can we move up? Is it Christian?
Moving up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, Christian, you are ready to go, so go ahead.
Okay, so my name's actually Chris. My wife's name is Christian. We live up on Monument Hill. And while I'm a big proponent for growing, you know, growing a town and having diversity and all of those things, I have the same issues with the density of this project. But in addition to that, I can't believe that this is going to be affordable by any means. I mean, this, this property itself is super prime, prime views, prime location, all the things that they're building around it, you know, Jackson Creek itself. You can't tell me that any part of this is going to be affordable. So that's, that's my concern.
All right, thank you. Okay, Drew, I'm not seeing anyone else, although I don't know if I have complete visibility online with their hands up. Do you see anyone else?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, and you do. If you can see the participants panel, which was left up, you can see all of the hands, and so should the room, sir.
Oh, okay. There we have a hand up. Can you move Jeremy to the presentation room? Yep.
We're ready, sir.
Thank you very much. Jeremy, go ahead.
Yes, just want to pipe in. I am a resident of Monument for about 10 years, landscape architect, work mostly in Colorado Springs. I'm familiar with Classic Homes and familiar with NES. Both good companies, do good work, and I might have a little bit different opinion. I understand that there are a lot of negative views, understand the issues of view sheds, people saying not enough schools, concerned about water, all the typical views. But this is the, a, a growing area. Monument is going to grow. This is vacant land, and I, I think my view is, if the applicant is meeting all of the requirements codes within the town of Monument, El Paso County, then if we're going to have density, this is the spot for it. Right along the highway, along a major thoroughfare, it gradually gets less dense as we get away. I'm in Bilge Woodmore, which is just east of here. And so is it a perfect development? No. The, whoever said that if people don't want it developed, I kind of agree with that. You know, I don't plan on buying this myself and keeping it vacant. I think that my only suggestion would be that looks like the developer's already doing this, is making good networking trails, improving obviously 105, Jackson Creek, and allowing some park space to be put in there. But I welcome the development, and I trust that the town will make comments to make it as good as it can be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, I don't see any further hands up online. I'll ask one last time for public comments in front of us in the crowd. Anything else? All right, let's do it. A few seconds. All right. We have, yes. See if you're the last there.
I live in Monument Hill. The planning, we need to know about the use of water, when the world's going to happen with water, and the schools, and it goes down from there. So it's just a matter of, you gotta, you gotta plan it. You gotta tell people how it's being, you come up with the numbers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do a final comment. You want to get a few more seconds? Okay, go ahead.
Wanted to ask, you know, why is it that the initial plan is so much different than the final plan? You know, we didn't really have that many problems with the initial plan. Also, I just have a concern having all of these commercial properties so close to an endangered species, which is the Prebles Field Mouse, and it's in the, in the big turnaround on I-25, the exit. It's that big because of the mouse. It is protected species. What kind of runoff would be from the parking lot of, of a business into, right into the waterway of this endangered species? That's all. Thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, at this time, I will ask the applicant to come back. And again, we're, we're not going to engage in back and forth, and just civility is key here. But we'll just ask the applicant to comment on a handful of items or the items that were raised.
Yes, I will. And thank you for the opportunity. And I'll try and be succinct, because some of the comments were repetitive, so I'll try not to repeat my responses. But I'm going to start by one gentleman, I think it was Mr. Keller, who said, once you do it, you can't take it back. That applies to zoning. This property is zoned. This property is zoned for this use, at this density and at this height. So that cannot be taken back. Neither can the final plat, which was approved earlier this year, which gives this property vested property rights. That cannot be taken back. So this lot, which is intended for multifamily residential in this location, is a vested property right with zoning. So that cannot be taken back. Some of the more specific comments that were made, I think some of the initial comments got a bit sidetracked, and we're talking about development on the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway. But I, I will comment on the broader questions. So quickly off the bat, the mouse habitat, it is in that larger circle, obviously, that's formed by the off-ramp of I-25. This site does not have any mouse habitat. Mouse habitat is usually around creeks, which it is around creeks. There are no creeks on this property, so there is no mouse habitat. The stormwater detention from the property will flow to the south to the detention pond that's in tract A, and then will discharge to the south. So it's not going anywhere near that area that was referenced. Regarding affordability, your comprehensive plan indicates that they're looking for more affordable. We tend to use the word attainable. Affordable has a very specific meaning. It means it's subsidized. It usually has state or federal funding. This is not what we mean. We mean attainable, something that is more affordable and providing additional options, rather than just single-family detached for purchase, which is the predominant product and housing stock in Monument. And in a, in a place where the average house price is now exceeding $800,000, the ability for people to be able to rent, and these will not be cheap apartments, we've not suggested they are, they're going to be in around that $2,000 range for a two-bedroom apartment. So they are good quality apartments with good quality amenities, but there are people who will be able to afford them, who cannot afford to buy a home in Monument at the current values that they are, that they're, they're at right now, and particularly with the increased interest rates. And we are finding across, across the region that there is an increased demand now for rental accommodation as interest rates go up and people are less able to afford to buy right now. So it's about being a more affordable housing option. We are not changing the zone. Somebody asked, why are we changing the zone? We're not changing the zone. We haven't materially changed the plan from the sketch plan. We've slightly reorganized the location of the commercial and the multifamily. That's the only change. And that was memorialized in the plat that was approved earlier this year. Regarding traffic, I think Mr. Stimple covered this quite well, but we had, that's already been evaluated. It was thoroughly evaluated with the master traffic report that was approved as part of the east side development. That considered all of the traffic proposed by this development, together with all background traffic, together with all projected future traffic. The traffic for this site in anticipated commercial development, it anticipated higher use, uses, higher traffic uses such as fast food restaurants. All of that was anticipated with the traffic study. And the proposed approved improvements are what was recommended by the traffic consultant, what has been discussed with CDOT, with the town, with El Paso County, and all these improvements are going to be constructed by the master developer. So a lot of people were talking about the current traffic conditions. Yeah, we, we agree that some of the, the intersection now, Jackson Creek and 105, doesn't perform very well. Those, some of these improvements are probably needed now, irrespective of any future development. But this is, the, the proposed improvements to Jackson Creek Parkway will significantly enhance the traffic conditions in this area, and will take into account the traffic from this entire development. Reference was made to water, to water. We are getting our water from Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. They have ample water sufficiency. That has to be assessed by the state. The state water engineer analyzes the water's adequacy and sufficiency. And the developer has to pay a significant amount of money to Woodmore Water and Sanitation District to get water serviced. And that will, that money then goes to help them to keep their system up to date, purchase any additional water rights they need, but the water is available for this development. School capacity was mentioned. School District 38 are part of the review process for all applications in the town. They review every single application. They have produced, it was a few years ago now, but they did a strategic plan for their entire requirements over the next 20, 30 years. They have enough land for schools. They need money to build the schools. They have a site at Forest Lakes. They have expansion area at Bear Creek, and they have indicated on multiple occasions that they do not need any additional land for schools. They welcome the growth because they actually see the future of student population decreasing, not increasing, and they welcome the growth to be able to keep, maintain their schools in the future. I'm trying to hit some of the bigger, more global comments before I get down into the actual site details. Okay, I think that they were those. So now I want to talk more particularly about the comments about preserving views. There was a comment about the number of units per structure identified in the comprehensive plan. I wasn't quite sure what that was referencing, but my response to that would be the comprehensive plan is a guideline. It is a guideline to development, to zoning. And this, the comprehensive plan was approved in 2017. This plan, the sketch plan was approved in 2020. The final plat was approved in this, this year, 2022. Both of those plans were considered against, in the context of the comprehensive plan, and were approved in the content, in the context of the comprehensive plan, including multifamily residential at this density and at this height. So the comprehensive plan has been evaluated. With regard to preserving views, there was a reference made by Mr. King that we have five buildings, 50 feet high, creating a 50-foot-high wall all along Jackson Creek Parkway. So I, I would like to respond to that in a number of ways. The, the five buildings include the single-story clubhouse, so that is not creating that wall that was referenced. With regard to the 50-foot maximum height, I explained why we have the 50-foot maximum height. That's what was approved in the zoning in the sketch plan, and that was what was approved in the previous zoning, so we're carrying that through. But our actual building height to the, to the top of the roof is 43 feet. But if you're actually to measure it per the code, it would only be 36 feet. So it is not a 50-foot-high wall of buildings. And we do have space between the buildings, maybe not as much as Mr. King would like, but we have about 40 feet between the buildings. Most single-family residential would have about 10 feet between the buildings. We have 40 feet between the buildings. So those view corridors are preserved. As I noted on the very first slide I presented, this represents approximately 25% of the overall frontage of Monument Junction along Jackson Creek on the west side. So as you're driving along Jackson Creek, hopefully you're looking at the road, not too much at the mountains, but you will be able to see across, and it's on the inside of the curve. I don't know if you noticed that as well. So you're actually going to be kind of looking past the buildings as you're driving along Jackson Creek Parkway. So we don't feel that this, this development plan, this plan really will block the views of the mountains. There will be a continu, it won't be a continuous view of the mountains along Jackson Creek Parkway, but rarely will that be the case. It will be intermittent, as would be expected. And the point we made when we did the sketch plan was that if you had commercial for the whole property, the entire property of Monument Junction, which was originally planned, and you had the 50-foot height, then you are more likely to get more substantial buildings, and that would put, create more impact on views across the entire site than what we were proposing, which we're still proposing, which is predominantly single-family residential, with a small component of, a smaller component of multifamily and a smaller component of commercial. So that mix of uses provides that variety. I think the only other comment I wanted to make was the gentleman online, Mr. Levere. I think I addressed his comments, which was actually a comment that Mr. Snow made about housing options, but I, I addressed that. But he was referring to another project, which was approved recently by Thompson Thrift, that violated zoning density. It didn't. It was approved in the context of the approved preliminary plan. And similarly, this is, this is being proposed in the context of the approved sketch plan. So there are no violations of zoning densities. And I'll let Mr. Foreman respond to the comment about the two items limit on the agenda. But I think with that, that is everything I wanted to push back on that was presented by the public here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions again. Not had any yet, so happy to answer any.
Understood. All right. So for the public, we will close the public comments section. And at this point, what we do is we have some questions and comments amongst the commissioners that might be directed at the applicant, it might be directed at staff. But either way, it's just a furtherance of some of the dialogue that's open to the public. So at this time, it's more of just an audience to, to listen. Okay. So with that, any initial questions? Or Mr. Foreman, did you want to respond to anything at this?
Yeah, I would. You know, prior to the meeting, I think I handed out to all the commissioners your bylaws and rules of procedure of the Town of Monument Planning Commission. And to address Mr. Levere's comments, it does say that you can limit applications. It says, except as may be required to comply with applicable statutes or ordinances of the Town of Monument, the planning commission may vote to limit the number of items that may be heard. This provision is designed to allow the commission adequate time for consideration of each agenda item, including applicant testimony and public hearing process for each case. The commission may schedule additional meetings to consider additional applications. I think what Mr. Revere is referring to is the BOT's recommend, or requirements pursuant to Town Code Section 18.03, 4.440. They may approve the submittal of concurrent preliminary final PUD applications if the application will conform with approval criteria. Mr. Revere, our town attorney, has concluded that as such, each final preliminary PUD counts as one application.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, I'll turn to the fellow commissioners, questions, comments. Who'd like to start? Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Andrea. I have a couple of questions. One, I, I think I need a little bit more clarification because I think either you did explain or tried to. One, I, I think I need a little bit more clarification because I think either you did explain or tried to. The traffic impact study called for all of these improvements that are very nicely drawn on a map. I appreciate that. But our staff report says they're tied to phasing. And then when I read on in the staff report about explaining what phases the project is in, both this and the next application say there are no phases. So would you explain what is triggering the improvements?
The, the uh, the traffic improvements were presented with this is getting complicated, phase one, which is on the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway, which in itself has been divided into phase A, B, and C. So the commitment was always that the, the, the the financial assurances for the improvements would be put up with the first phase of phase one, so phase A of phase one. And that is currently under um, the, the agreement for that is, is currently under discussion with the town. So the actual implementation of the improvements will be phased. Um, the first uh, thing that will be done will be the uh, the improvements at Jackson Creek Parkway and one oh five, particularly the right turn lane of one oh five, which I think everybody generally agrees is probably needed right now um, to help traffic improvements. And then the section, uh, the improvements at Jackson Creek Parkway down to that first intersection, not the first intersection, the first signalized intersection at Fat Tire, they, they will be um, undertaken at the same time. And, and then the internal roads, obviously, that will serve both the Whataburger and the um, apartments, uh, the uh, the, the semi-circles there that will be um, constructed prior to obviously these developments being able to go forward because they provide the access to those developments. And simultaneously, the um, the improvements for each of those intersections for the developments will be um, implemented at that time as well. So all the, so all these, sorry?
At what time?
At, so at the time, the, the, the um, access roads, internal access roads are constructed. The intersection improvements on Jackson one oh, uh, on Jackson Creek Parkway to provide access to the site, so the right turn lanes, the left turn lanes, they will be implemented at that time as well. So all those improvements have to take place before the development can commence, but before anybody can occupy the development because they provide access. So there's no way of accessing these developments without providing those intersections and these improvements.
So the improvements to Jackson Creek Parkway are tied to um, it sounds like the roads that access it, which is mainly for the improvement.
Well, the, the, um, the access improvements at those intersections are tied to the construction of those roads. And, and when those uh, roads will be construed, those roads have to be in place before these developments can take place. Because those roads are providing access to, to the development. But the, 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 the more general improvements at the intersection of one oh five and Jackson Creek Parkway, I believe, and I'm going to ask uh, actually if Mr. Stimple or Mr. Lloyd does.
Yes, you can. I'm struggling. I, I, I just don't know what's a trigger on this.
I know, I know. It, it, as the master developer, here's what we had committed to. We committed to make these improvements now. But these have to remain functioning intersections. We need to separate the onsite access roads from Jackson Creek and one oh five. Jackson Creek and one oh five, we are in the process of posting for those improvements. We have to agree on a dollar amount. They have to get the traffic engineer to sign off on it. We are ready to do so, and we have told Mr. Foreman that since the first plan got approved. And that we are actively working with H U B, H W U, what?
H U V.
Yeah, F H U. They're the traffic, and, and we have to agree on what, what, what are the dollar amount we have to post? And, and we, then we will post that. That gives the assurance that dollar amount is related to the amount of work that has to be done on one oh five and Jackson Creek that is our share. From Fat Tire to the intersection of one oh five, the left turn in as you're going westbound off of one oh five, the continuous right turn as you're coming eastbound off of one oh five. There will be a dollar amount associated with that. We will post a bond for it. Then what happens is those improvements are triggered now. But each one of those, we have to get plans approved. We have to get plans approved by CDOT. We gotta get plans approved by the county. We've got, and, and we are working diligently. In fact, we helped and assisted the Town of Monument in getting a contribution of one million dollars from El Paso County to the one oh five Jackson Creek intersection. You have some grants, some of which are in hand, some of which are applied for. Those grants have trigger dates by what you have to spend them. We are assisting, and what we worked with the town on is saying rather than spreading out modest improvements along Jackson Creek, along the length of Monument Junction, our dollar contribution amount is a fixed amount based upon what's the cost from Higbee to one oh five? What do you contribute in traffic?
Okay, that's good. So, so this is a public improvement agreement that will be signed and signed before any development happens.
Definitely missed screen it is.
Okay.
The, the Town of Monument is currently under design to be, to widen Jackson Creek to a four lane divided corridor with sidewalks and a bike lane. A traffic study has been completed. Will determine the developer's participation amount in the funding of these improvements. The project's scheduled to begin at the exit from I twenty five and one oh five to Jackson Creek, and then at the end proposed to, they're, they're going to be done, what, in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three?
With our, our share. Depends how fast the approvals come in.
Right.
But we're prepared to move and, and I want to, once we apply, once we put up, we are developing actively on the east side now.
Right.
We're putting in water and sewer. We are doing, and, and so, so I want to make sure we all understand the development is moving forward. But we will start to build all those improvements that we've talked about as soon as they are approved. And we have to keep the intersection functioning, so you can't just go stop it and do it all at once. It would be cheaper, it'd be easier, but it doesn't work that way. So we will phase, we will.
And we're also working with the county, like the Mr. Stimple said, we're getting a million dollars from the county, but the county also has a plan to widen one oh five from um, Knollwood East.
Okay. Design guidelines. I thought they were required for a final PUD. In our earlier version of the staff report, it said that uh, Architectural Review Committee was being put together, a private one by the developer, and that it would look at all architecture to see if it met the guidelines. Then I read the updated staff report, and design guidelines have been taken completely out. There is no mention. Are there not design guidelines for this PUD?
So there are design guidelines for the east side for the single family. Um, but because the commercial and the, and the multifamily residential are coming forward as one of complete development, you, you are seeing the entire development in one, one go. So design guidelines are really geared more towards single family residential where the individual lots will come forward separately after the PUD. You don't get to see the individual home design or the landscape design for that individual lot. So we, we, we have detailed design guidelines as part of the preliminary plan for the east side. But I do understand that um, Classic Homes has a gen-, overall design, development, design guides that they are uh, providing uh, and, and reviewing. They are reviewing. They are effectively the A R C for the development and are reviewing uh, each of the developments that they, as they come forward. So uh, this developer alliance had to provide their plans to the, to the um, review board um, for consideration, and there was discussion, as at Whataburger, and there was discussion about design, colors, materials, and so on and so forth. So there are design guidelines in place, but they're not part of this PUD.
Okay, I mean, and I'm, I'm going to talk about this more in the, the next project. So here's one simple question. Design guidelines for the west side, is that for all of the PUD on the west side? Is it for the multifamily and is it for the commercial? Or, you know, does each thing do its own thing? And then they're reviewed by the applicant, which in my mind is kind of the fox watching the hen house because we're not reviewing any design guidelines. Nor are we seeing if anything is in line with the guidelines because they aren't there. We don't have.
Yes, so, yes, as indicated, there's no design guidelines specifically for the west side. There will be design guidelines associated with the midtown to the south because that is a, a single family residential. But you are, you are seeing with this plan the entirety of the development and the design of this development. So you are getting to review the design of this development with this plan.
We don't have guidelines that tie these.
That, there's, there's, other than the um, overarching design guidelines and intent that the Classic Homes has for the development as the master developer. But that, they are not part of the PUD, so.
What are they part of?
They are Classics' own design guidelines that they have.
The town also requires them.
The town hasn't required us to, to provide those or any guidelines for this development.
Okay.
Ma'am, I got a question. Commissioner Trahill, I'm looking at uh, item number under eighteen oh three, eighteen point oh three point four oh, four five oh. And it's a preliminary, preliminary PUD plan. And it's the criteria that we are marking as far as whether or not it's, this is an acceptable aspect of going forward. In your narrative, it says the project provides a benefit to the town such as increase in the variety of development to fill a need and/or provide amenities for the benefit of the town or residents. The comprehensive plan acknowledges the residential attached use is an important component of the overall land use mix for the town. As it provides a mix of housing options to serve the growing workforce and a more affordable housing alternative for new homeowners or those transitioning out of single family detached residence. The residential density type, lot size, and price point proposed by the Monument Junction Lot Five Development will provide an affordable housing option to serve the growing area workforce. Now, I've done my math. Vista Jackson Creek, single bedroom appointment or apartment runs roughly about sixteen fifty for a one bedroom apartment at six hundred, or correction, seven hundred and sixty two square feet. If I had a son, eighteen years old, he's working at Amazon. He's not going to have a high criteria job. That's fifteen dollars an hour. Monthly, he's going to be spending twenty four hundred dollars of just free tax revenue. He's going to be spending sixty eight percent of his income for housing. How are you going, how is that helping the residents here? Because it's not giving them or us that availability for housing. So who exactly are we providing housing for?
We're providing housing for a variety of people, and that's, that's the objective. So it's not, it's not necessarily for um, the, the lowest income wage earners or the highest income wage earners. There, there is a middle ground for people who either choose to rent uh, as a housing choice, and there are many of those. There are people who are maybe wait, waiting to be able to afford to buy a house who, who, who can probably afford the rent but can't afford to purchase a home. And there are, there are occupations where people are um, earning um, more than probably fifteen dollars an hour. We're, we're not suggesting that this is affordable housing. We're just saying it's more affordable than the uh, and I think we use the term more affordable than the.
I'm looking at your narrative here, ma'am. It says one thing, the residential density type, lot size, and price point proposed by the Monument Junction Five Development provide affordable housing options to serve the growing workforce.
Yes.
We're talking Monument.
Yes, indeed.
But you just stated right now.
But there's, there's a growing workforce of um, publics, uh, employees. There's a growing workforce of teachers. There's a growing workforce of nurses. And they are.
A supervisor at UPS, one of the biggest entities that we have approved, and we do have people that are working there. A supervisor's hourly rate is thirty three dollars an hour.
Yes, sir.
Their monthly is at fifty two eighty. Now they're spending for a single bedroom apartment at sixteen hundred and fif-, sixteen fifty one, right here at Jackson Villa, thirty two percent of their income for housing. How's that affordable?
Well, part of the reason the, the rents are at that level is because the vistas at Jackson Creek is about the only apartment building currently in Monument.
In Colorado Springs right now, we're at seventy percent occupancy in the entire northern half of Colorado Springs for occupancy at all apartment buildings.
That, I respectfully disagree with you, sir, because we, I have worked on multiple projects recently where the quoted occupancy is ninety five to ninety eight percent.
I'd love to see those stats.
I can provide them for you at any time. I'm not sure this hearing is appropriate for them.
Certainly. Thank you, ma'am.
Real quick, before we uh, keep going on our horn, Commissioner Hours is online. And I just wanted to uh, let him know that if he does want to uh, inject some comment or otherwise questions, raise your hand, okay? I'm looking at you, at least your online panel, all right? So just raise your hand and we will circulate back to you. All right. I'll go back to folks here. Any other commissioners like to make a question or comment for the applicant or town? Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Agley, I had a question related to compromise on, on this multifamily uh, location. Uh, in keeping with the spirit of our comprehensive plan for the, for the city, for the Town of Monument, uh, it talks about multifamily units for mixed use being no greater than four to six units per structure. Are you willing to even compromise to go down to that versus and, and really having maybe forty to sixty total units in this ten to eleven acre property versus two hundred and sixty four?
Can you repeat the question? Sorry, I, I, I was trying to follow that, but I, I lost the train a little bit.
The, the comprehensive plan talks about mixed use and having multifamily units no greater than four to six units per structure. Are you willing to compromise and, and go to that? And rather than having two hundred and sixty four total units over that twelve acre parcel or eleven acre parcel, have forty to sixty units over that eleven acre parcel?
I, that is, that is beyond a compromise, so I, I would say that, that, that is um, it would make the project completely unviable. And it is also um, completely not in accordance with the zoning that has already been approved. So the zoning has been approved at twenty five units per acre, which is what we're proposing. And irrespective of the number of uh, units in a structure, which is clearly four to six units in a structure for a multifamily apartment is entirely unrealistic. And a comprehensive plan is a guide in that respect, and that was just a suggestion. And we had our sketch plan approved at this density anticipating apartments quite clearly at uh, this density, I repeated this density, this height and this use. And that is uh, was approved in the context of that comprehensive plan and approved at that density. So um, that, that is, that is not a compromise. It would be a completely different project. It would be a completely different um, uh, land use and um, and it, it's, yes, I can, I, I don't even need to ask my clients that, that, that level of compromise going from three, two hundred and sixty four units to forty to sixty units would be just untenable.
Okay, um, so in other words, you'd prefer to have essentially two football fields long, fifty foot, forty three feet high, blocking the views not only of the existing residents, but the other hundred and forty five residents that you're going to build right across the street of Jackson Parkway, the new that we're considering it later on tonight, so that they'll not have views either northward, northwest, south, southwest of any of the front range.
I, I think they will, the majority of them will still have views, that the, the, the road is, the road curves, the, the views are angled. Um, the, the buildings are not so tall that they will block the views unless you're stood right in front of them. I've had this question at multiple hearings uh, throughout my career that you, um, questions about blocking views. You're only really blocking the view if you stand right in front of the building. And if you're any distance from the building, you're going to get a view. Uh, you could walk through any um, uh, hillside area and you will see the mountains. You'll see the mountains until you're right in front of the two-story home, and then you can't see the, the mountains. So it, it happens everywhere. And uh, all new building will block a view from some point. But the, the question is, is it's not blocking, blocking individual views, is it having an overall impact on the view? And that is why I presented the plan, which showed it was only a proportion of that frontage. There are breaks between the buildings, forty foot breaks. Um, that's almost as wide as the building is tall. And uh, so there are plenty of vantage points for views, and it will not be, it will be an intermittent um, situation and scenario.
Sorry.
All right, so just for clarity, basically what I got with the traffic is if it was entirely up to, and I'll look at you, if it's entirely up to you, you would write the check, it'd be done today. Okay. So that addresses this traffic problem. I've heard things on the school, I imagine you guys went to the school district, you offered them land like you're supposed to, they said no, they said they wanted money, and you paid them the money.
That just...
That they require.
Mm-hmm.
And whatever amount of money they would have required, you would have paid.
Yes. That gets paid at building permit, I will want to clarify, we haven't paid it yet.
Okay, but that has been worked out. So as for the school part, for development, you've done your part. The rest has to, I mean, the rest has to be done by the voters. Because as the town, we don't control District Thirty-Eight at all. Wish we did? We don't. The other thing that I have on this, I remember I was here when that went from commercial to PUD. How long was that land for sale?
Oh, gosh, the landowner, we've been working with that landowner with NES for years, and he's owned the property, that property, and he owns the property on the west side of the highway as well since the eighties. And it was zoned for commercial since the eighties, and they couldn't sell it for commercial, not the entire property.
But for the most...
And initially, we came, so initially, we came forward with a plan for the entire property in 2015 to be residential, but that got voted down because of the taking away all the commercial. So the town wanted to see more commercial, so that's when we came back in with the mixed use, we discussed this with Mr. Foreman at the time, and came in with a mixed-use development that had some commercial components and less residential and less residential density. But even at the original plan, we always envisioned an area, a similar area of multifamily.
Okay, yeah, because I remember on that, and I believe I was one of the ones that put in that we wanted a little bit of commercial, not just another housing tract, and that's why we didn't zone it for that. But it's been for sale since the eighties.
Yes.
So it's not like you guys snuck in here and just decided to buy up all this ranch land.
Been vacant for a very long time, yes.
There was for-sale signs up there that...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I personally can't wait for Jackson Creek to be improved, to be widened. It drives me nuts having a two-lane, especially in school traffic. But obviously, you've heard a lot about View Quarter, the concern. I kind of understand your point on the turn, I also see that as like you're facing it, then you're turning as you're heading south. Has there been any consideration? I appreciate your depictions, too, that's super helpful, we rarely get them, and it's just for everyone, you normally don't get depictions like that. So, thank you. It does depict the parkway as essentially level, all the way to the development, all the way to the apartment. Has there been any consideration, you know, keeping with the height, assuming that, you know, that's, and I understand your, the compromise, you know, typically it gets measured as a halfway point on the roof, but not this time. Has there been any consideration in terms of landscaping, or does the topography allow? Because in other parts of Jackson Creek, which I found wonderful, you know, how did, how did a certain apartment complex on Leather Chaps with similarly-sized buildings, how is that not obstructing? Well, guess what? It's a ten-foot drop-down, essentially, and that saves a little bit of that. So as I'm driving Leather Chaps, guess what I still see? And approximately the same set off or offset. Same thing with the commercial development, you know, the Don Tequila and the Office Depot, those things were dropped. Is there any way to do that here, with the topography, to save a few feet, get a few feet?
There really isn't, and I'll explain why, because the property, as you know, is currently about twenty feet above one oh five at the north end, and then it falls gradually to the south, not gradually, quite steeply to the south. And we have to make this property be able to drain to the detention pond. So approximately eight feet have been taken off that north end, so that's been brought down considerably. And then that, obviously, that dirt has to be distributed across a site, and then it has to be graded down, so it will drain to that detention pond. And at the same time, the grade has to try and match Jackson Creek Parkway. So where the access points are, they need to be at the same grade as Jackson Creek Parkway, which also slopes down. So all the grading and the tie-in points means that that site is actually maybe about a couple of feet higher than it was previously after it's been graded. It doesn't sit very high above Jackson Creek, it's pretty much at the same grade as Jackson Creek Parkway right now, as graded now and as planned. But to depress the buildings would just create a drainage problem on that site. So that there really isn't a way of depressing the building any further. But with the three-story building and the design of the roof, like I say, that the height is actually based on how it's measured, it is only effectively thirty-six feet, based on the technical manner in which it's measured, which any building is measured in the town.
So for understanding that, for those buildings that are adjacent to Jackson Creek, has there been any consideration of, instead of three stories, making them two?
There's been consideration of numerous things. There's been consideration of numerous aspects of change, and some of those were discussed with Save Monument, reduction in height, reduction in the number of buildings. But they have been given serious consideration, serious evaluation, running numbers. But the developer has financing partners, and the financing of the development would not allow for any reduction, based on the current analysis that has been done, would not allow for any reduction in the numbers to that extent, to make those changes possible, unfortunately.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Guy.
I don't have a question, actually, I have a comment. This does tie to the sketch plan. I personally find this development is disappointing. I find it disappointing because I was an urban downtown planner for a long time. I understand building up to the sidewalk, I know the importance of it, a parkway is not a main street. And I'm not the planner on this, so this is really just a comment, there's nothing I can do about it. When you put buildings up to the sidewalk on a parkway that means green, you are blocking the mountains. Even if you put them further, you might have a little bit of a view, but no, you're not going to have it if you put it right there. So this is me airing a personal disappointment. I want to say something about the process that has changed, and I know last month, some people kind of complained about it. We're combining preliminary and final PUD as well as subdivision. This was a sketch plan that was done earlier, it was approved two and a half years ago. It was a sketch plan, it set your density, it set your uses, it set a lot of things. I wasn't here then, but I know what this board saw, this commission saw bubbles. And when they said, well, you know, how tall is it going to be, what's it going to, everybody said, well, it's just a concept, you'll find that out later. This is the later. So here's the point I'm making. It is good for anybody who questions it to put all these things together, we need to hear them together. Right now, I think this commission is being shown the tail of the elephant, and then in another meeting, the ear of the elephant, and in another meeting, the trunk of the elephant, and we're voting on each one, and we don't realize, we thought it was a puppy dog, no, it's an elephant. We need all of these things to be together, one vote, if it takes us all night, we can only do one case, we need to understand it. Because I think a lot of things have been lost in doing one bit two years ago, one bit six months ago, and now this, and I don't see a good way out of it this time.
I have to agree with you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Trahill, when I look at this, it feels like a bait and switch, because the actual bubble was there, and we talked about this. However, the main portion was, was mixed use. We looked at it as something different than what is being proposed. So now, as I sat on that board two years ago, still as a commissioner, and I looked at it, I was like, well, wait a minute, this has, something's going to change here, and sure as heck, as this is being presented. Now we're talking quite a few entities that are coming in, and it's going to affect the community. It's, I think, more so not necessarily by the amount of people, but just as we already identified, this is more for something other than Monument. If it was for Monument, I could see that, but again, the statistics and the monetary aspect of putting up an apartment building does not coincide with what is needed in On the opposite side, I understand, I understand the investment in which the organization has put forth, the aspect of planning and preparing and doing these things, I'm not negating that. I see there is value, and I understand the aspect that, again, there's a lot of planning that isn't there. But I think that, just as Commissioner Green had stated, it has to be clear going in exactly what it is. So that way, we're not putting that conundrum right now to make a vote to say whether it's approved or not approved. Because as it stands, does it meet the comprehensive plan? That's very subjective. Your view as a developer is different from our view as a resident. Now, as we get ready to make that decision, it's going to be very subjective, simply because, again, is it fair to the young lad that got hit by a car over here by the high school? Is it fair that we in Colorado have the highest rate of vehicle crimes and theft in Colorado, and we're right here by I-25, and we're going to put an apartment complex right next to the highway? Is that going to put an undue burden on the law enforcement officers that are here in a town that were already stretched thin? These are things that I think we need to be really concerned with when we start putting these entities into an area that is very close, very small, and it cannot grow with this big capacity at this time, in my opinion. So I thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, please.
Commissioner Peck, we've thrown the word compromise around a couple of times, and I just wanted to provide you an opportunity to discuss, because there has been, this has been a two-year process. What has the compromise been? From the developer's side, with the neighbors and Save Monument, what has been discussed and what's been agreed to?
Well, we did discuss with Save Monument the prospect of the possibility, as I mentioned, of removing a building, and that was considered by the developer, and it's just proven to be unfeasible financially to do that. And even with, working with the master developer on land price and so on, that is still something that's under consideration. But as it stands at this moment, it's something that they could not commit to. So that was the compromise that was discussed, and it's something that they feel they cannot offer at this time.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hours, you have anything? Looking, not seeing your hand, just want to make sure you're there. Okay. All right, go ahead. Nope, you raised your hand. Are you on?
I am.
All right, go ahead.
I'm waiting for discussion, and I have some points I want to make during the commissioners' discussion. I do not have any questions for the applicant.
Well, now is the time. You got it, Commissioner Hours.
Okay. I'd like to point out to the applicants and sit down, because I'm going to be a little while. I'd like to point out to the citizens that are present and accounted for, and for the commissioners, that the review development requires, step one, that the finding of substantial compliance with the future land development use plan requires that if the development application or request does not substantially conform to the comprehensive plan, we, the Planning Commission, may request that the applicant is amended to conform to the adopted plan, we may deny the application, modify or place conditions on the application to ensure that the application is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Step two of that review process says that finding a consistency with the adopted plan, if the request conforms to the future land use plan, the next step is a finding of consistency with adopted policies. Policies which were developed through the extensive community engagement process seek to balance the right of the individual with the interest of the community at large. I would also like to make comments concerning the traffic that was brought up. I know that it's heavy, but there's been traffic studies that says it can be tolerated, and that's an issue that we can't disapprove this project for. I'd also like to point out that as a general rule, having been on the Planning Commission for quite a while, that when we're reviewing sketch plans, we ask questions, but as a rule, we don't disapprove sketch plans because they're a marketing tool for the owner. Likewise, when we review plats, we ask questions, pretty hard questions, but as a rule, we don't disapprove plats because they're marketing tools, as a rule. The sketch plan and the plat gives the owner an opportunity to sell portions of his land or her land to someone to develop. Having said that, I'd like to point out that the owners received the Board of Trustees approval for the sketch plan and a final plating. However, to exercise the vested right given the owner with those two approvals, it must also receive a PUD approval. Eighteen point oh three point five four five oh, preliminary PUD plan. A, the preliminary plan stage is a comprehensive review of the development proposal. Section eighteen point oh three point four three zero, prior approved plan development of the town's development code states that if the property has received a sketch plan approval but has not been planted, platted, the property may be developed pursuant to the terms of the original approval, provided the owner shall be responsible for obtaining approval of a PUD and a plat prior to development. After the approval of the Monument Junction West filing one plat and the sketch plan, the owner received an approval for a PUD on the east side. That residential PUD combined with this Lot Five request and the other pending residential request will recreate a serious imbalance of residential and non-residential in the development. This PUD does not provide a benefit to the town, such as increasing the variety of development to fill a need and to provide amenities for the benefit of town residents. A, Board of Trustees has approved for Monument Junction's east side a two-hundred-and-four residential unit PUD using forty-eight percent, or thirty-nine point eight-three acres of the east-west total, eighty-three point nine-seven-seven acres. B, this west-side lot preliminary final PUD for two-hundred-and-sixty-four multifamily units increases the residential land use another thirteen percent to a total of sixty-one percent devoted to residential in Monument Junction. Give me a moment here. C, the owner has a Midtown Collection Monument Junction West PUD pending Planning Commission and BOT review to use sixteen point nine acres for a maximum eight units per acres or one-hundred-and-thirty-five residential units. The owner's proposed residential PUD for sixteen point nine acres and Lot Five, ten point six eight seven acres, combined with the approved thirty-nine point eight-three acres of the east side, will increase Monument Junction's land development to be seventy-six percent of the total eighty-three point nine-seven acres. of the total 83.97 acres. In other words, primarily residential. Two, this PUD does not result in an appropriate relationship between use areas, both internal and surrounding. A. The owner's pending and under-reviewed PUDs for the residential units would increase the already-approved 204 units to a total of 603 units, making residential primarily, primary with less than 24% remaining for non-residential. B. The surrounding area does not have an adequate amount of non-residential retail and commercial to reasonably serve the existing and newly-approved residential on the Jackson Creek Parkway. One, the PUD for 864 new single-family, multifamily, and apartments have been approved by the BOT since May of 2021 on the Jackson Creek Parkway. Those units will house an estimated 2,500 residents. Those units were Monument Junction Phase 1 on the east side, Village at Jackson Creek on the west side, and Jackson Creek North filing on the east side. Two additionally, and over 2,800 existing and under-construction residential units on the east side of the Jackson Creek Parkway will be housing an estimated 8,500 residents impacting businesses on the parkway. Sanctuary Point, Promontory Point, Home Place Ranch, Jackson Creek Heights and Homestead, Jackson Creek North Vista Apartments, Jackson Creek Senior Living Center, Limes Tail Road, Town Homes. And between Baptist Road and Highway 105, there's only an approximate 220 acres of land providing goods and services to the community at large. Jackson Creek Crossing, Monument Marketplace, Jackson Creek Commerce Center, and very small center on Highway 105 at Knolls Wood Drive. Three, the plan is not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Specifically, A. As new development proposals are submitted, it is critically important to maintain a balance between residential and non-residential uses to maintain the overall fiscal health of the community. Non-residential tax rates of 29% and the added benefit of potential sales tax and real property tax revenues versus 7.96% property tax rate for residential. B. New developments should be a mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience, goods, services, and employment opportunities for area residents. C. Mixed use, note this includes PUD, developments should promote work, live, play, with residential use being subordinate to the non-residential use. And D. Policies which were developed through the extensive community engagement process seek to balance the rights of the individual with the interest of the community at large. The excessive residential being requested on Monument Junction is not a balance for the rights of the individual with the interest of the community at large. Following the commission, following the commissioner's discussion, I may make a motion to deny the Lot 5 PUD. It's my comment.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hours.
Hours?
Go on mute. Not us? Sorry. Okay. All right, any other comments from fellow commissioners? Okay. With that, question and comment section, we'll close that, and I will look to my fellow commissioners here or online to make a motion. I didn't hear the entire motion, so I think... Yeah, I think he was saying, "I will make a motion."
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hours?
You got it.
Okay.
Commissioner Hours, you just put yourself on mute. You can unmute, and then go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Commissioner Hours, I'd like a point of order. Uh, we have a seven-member commission. I count seven up there and me out here.
That's correct, Commissioner Hours.
So would we have a vote of eight?
Is there any issue with eight commissioners participating? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Hours.
Agree for the motion?
We are.
Okay. Uh, and if my motion is approved, I have a second motion related to the motion following the vote on that motion. Request. Okay, motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend denial of Monument Junction West...
Commissioner Hours, you muted yourself one more time. We're happy to try again.
Okay, you ready?
All right, here we go.
Let me get my hand away from my mouse. Motion, I move that the Planning Commission recommend denial of Monument Junction West, Lot 5 preliminary final PUD because it fails to meet the following criteria from the Town of Monument's Land Development Code. 18.03.450 Preliminary PUD Plan. D. Criteria for Review. The preliminary PUD must adequately address the following criteria in a manner consistent with the general public interest, health, safety, and welfare. Number five. The project provides a benefit to the town, such as increasing the variety of development to fill a need and/or private amenities for the benefits of the town residents. Seven. An inappropriate relationship exists between use areas, both internal and surrounding, with adequate buffer areas provided if warranted. And number 13. The plan is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Town's, Town's 2017 Comprehensive Plan. Page 33 of 64, Chapter 4, Future Land Use and Extension Plan. Last paragraph in bold print reads, "As new development proposals are submitted, it is critically important to maintain a balance between residential and non-residential uses to maintain the overall fiscal health of the community. Non-residential uses have a property tax rate of 29% and the added benefit of potential sales tax and real property tax revenue versus 7.96% property tax rate for residential." Page 42 of 64, at mixed use, which includes planned unit development, types. A mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience, goods, services, and employment opportunities for area residents. And mixed use, note that this includes PUD, developments should promote work, live, and play with residential use being subordinate to non-residential use. End of motion.
Commissioner Trujillo, I second.
All right, we'll turn to staff for a vote.
Do we want to have, ask if there's any other motions, or do we vote first? I'm just...
Did you want to know the second, the reason on my second, or do I need a...
I don't think so.
Perfect, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Danny Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Light?
No.
Commissioner Sean Zernico?
No.
Commissioner Kathy Green?
Um, I, I went, I'm voting no, but I, I would like to add that I'm voting no, not because I don't agree with everything he said. I just feel like the comprehensive plan is in Colorado, not mandatory. It's recommended, and I, I just think after approving the sketch plan for me to vote yes on that would be too subjective on my part.
Commissioner Ray Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chairman Martin Trujillo?
Just so I'm clear. A yes vote states that I agree, a no vote says I do not agree, correct?
Correct.
My vote is yes.
Chairman Chris Bethome?
This is a difficult one, and this is not for anything other than my view that there is conformance, at least to the extent that there's a requirement regarding height, regarding setback, regarding what was allowed on the sketch. And with that in mind, this makes this very difficult. Commissioner Hours raises some very good points. He raises the preliminary PUD plan, 1803.450, as part of his motion, as part of criteria. I do look and want to just comment, for Kathy, there is a portion where the plan is, there's a requirement the plan is consistent with it, the town's comprehensive plan. It's part of it. And so with that, I will vote yes.
That is, 1, 2, 3, 4, yeses for Danny's motion to deny, and 1, 2, noes. So it is disapproved. I mean, the motion for Danny is approved, which is a disapproval.
Right.
Yes.
So, and just for a point of clarity with the public, the Planning Commission is a recommending body. This doesn't stop here. It goes to the board, and it goes to the board just with our recommendation. A recommendation that was two and a half hours long, that ended up being what it was. But it doesn't stop here. It's just simply, all right, this is what the Planning Commission said. This is what the Planning Commission had to say about it. The ultimate vote rests with the BOT, all right? So just keeping that in mind and loving the participation of the residents and the voices of the residents, keep that in mind as this thing keeps moving forward, as, as every proposal we hear moves forward, okay? All right.
Real quick, question for staff. For our yes vote, do you want, do you want the narrative for the board? Or do you want us to just go with what Danny proposed across the board?
If you don't have any, sorry, if you don't have any changes?
I, I would like to add
Danny's motion?
To Danny's motion, for my deny, or for my approval of yes, under 18.03.450, Section D, Number 5. The project provides a benefit to the town due to the fact of the structure of financing for the apartments, it would not be conducive with the local residents within Monument. So it would facilitate another individuals outside of Monument, not necessarily for the benefit of the town. That was why my denial was, or that was why I approved Danny's motion, but that was my take on that. Thank you.
I'm actually curious now, because since Danny's motion passed, he said he had another motion to add to it.
Commissioner Hours, just as a final point, was there anything else that... Because we're not adding to the motion as passed, we want to be clear on that. But is there any other information that you would like to add to why you made the motion or otherwise?
Yes, okay, I want to be clear. The motion did, in fact, pass, right?
I... That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes. I have a second motion.
So, Commissioner Hours, we're not doing a second motion on a motion that just passed?
No, I'm, I'm doing another motion related to this motion.
Yeah, so Commissioner Hours, we, we just, if there's a point of clarification you wish to add regarding why you made the motion, I'll entertain that, but we're not going to do another motion on top of the motion.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I move that the Planning Commission, hold on. I move that the Planning Commission request the Planning Director to include the following data and Planning Commission denial rationale in the Board of Trustees packet for their consideration of the Monument Junction West Lot 5 preliminary slash final PUD. Is this okay for me to continue?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the staff, I'm gonna leave it to the staff to tell me, because I, I don't feel that it is, and it's one thing to add, this is a rationale, but the motion as made was made.
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner, that he can add his rationale to be included in the packet for the board.
Right.
He could actually send an email to staff, and we would include that. But making a motion, I absolutely never heard of that.
Okay. So Commissioner Hours, did you hear that?
So, basically, I just want to make sure the staff's clear. I'm not trying to complicate things. I do know that when a motion is denied by this Planning Commission, that the Board of Trustees... Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees do not always understand why we denied it. So basically, what I was about to read to you is exactly the rationale that I gave you as to why I made the motion. So, if that's acceptable, that's what I would be providing to go into the minutes. But I'm just...
That would be... Go ahead. Yeah, that would be acceptable. So, and the town staff is open to receiving an email from you regarding and including as well in the, in the minutes, additional rationale that you've laid out.
That, okay, okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that all that gets in there and is presented. Then I would make one other request, and then I will shut up. I'm requesting that you, the chairman, ask the mayor directly or through the town manager for an extended time at the October 17 trustee meeting for you or your appointment pointee to make a verbal presentation related to the commission's denial of the Lot 5 PUD. That's all I have.
All right, so staff heard you, town manager Mike Foreman heard you.
And, and just like at the last BOT, I think Commissioner Hours made a statement at that BOT.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hours. Okay, so before moving on to the second point, and given the time, that's already elapsed, what I would like to do pursuant to our bylaws, Article 2, Section 3, is make a motion to my fellow commissioners that we limit the number of items that will be heard tonight. And specifically, because I expect the next one to take as much time, if not, maybe a little bit less, limit tonight's hearing to this, this next item. And then after that, and working with the town manager, Items 3 and 4, I don't know where they would find a home, if it would be next meeting or otherwise, but at least not tonight.
Right, it would be the next meeting.
Okay.
Next. Or you could, as, as the ordinance says, as your bylaws say, you could schedule another meeting between now and the BOT meeting on Monday, or... another meeting between now and the BOT meeting on Monday, or between now and the next planning commission meeting.
Thank you. I don't, I don't seem prepared to do that immediately right now. So at least for that, I guess my motion to my fellow commissioners is to end tonight's public hearings and recommendations at the conclusion of our next item, item two, and then to have three and or four be heard at the next meeting, whenever that is in November.
I second the motion, Commissioner Trujillo.
Okay. I think because of posting issues, you will need to extend these to not, not just take them off, you'll have to extend them to date certain. So it would be what's the next planning commission.
We need to continue, continue them to a date certain.
Got it. I don't know that. Second one.
We'll have to bump things on.
Okay. So for further clarification to November 9th?
Yep. So, and let me be clear about this. Without another meeting between now and then, we will have to bump things off of there because of, it will be a fuller docket than tonight.
I understand the consequences. This is a function of what happened at the last meeting, where, you know, we had to take these two off the table. So I think we'll work through it. I think we'll be better prepared as well. We'll talk amongst ourselves for possibly scheduling another meeting, not immediately, but maybe between November and December. Okay. Reese?
Commissioner Danny Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Sean Zernico?
Yes.
Commissioner Kathy Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Egley?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Martin Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Wathomey?
Yes.
Seven to zero vote, and it passed.
All right, thank you. So let's go right ahead to number two in the public hearings and recommendations, following the similar procedure we had moments ago, DA dot seven five dash twenty twenty-two underscore Burger Works Whataburger, the prelim final PUD. I'll turn to staff once everyone makes their way out. All right, thank you.
Once again, Sean Snow will be making the presentation.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. This next presentation deals with Burger Works Monument Junction Preliminary Final PUD.
Thank you. All right, we'll just call for order. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Thank you, Sean.
Of course. Project location, as Ms. Barlow described in the last presentation, this is the parcel that is north of Lot Five, proposed for a Whataburger restaurant. Much like we discussed in the last presentation, the same criteria apply. I will go through this. So it's part of the record. Existing zoning, June 15, 2020, Board of Trustees approved the Village Sketch PD Plan. They approved Sketch PD Plan, identified the project area as a bank, restaurant, bar, car wash, convenience store, general retail, microbrewery, distillery, office, personal services establishment, pharmacy, shopping center, and small animal clinic. Let's set the parameters for the type of commercial. Sketch PD Plan from the town's previous land development code describes it as a conceptual version of the preliminary PD plan. In preliminary fashion, as I stated before, the sketch plan indicates the proposed uses and densities of the property, including open space parks and regional trail corridors and planned major roadways and utility services. The existing zoning continuing, February 7, 2022, Board of Trustees approved Resolution Number 08 dash 2022, a resolution approving a preliminary final plat for Monument Junction West filing number one. Monument's Land Development Code, Section 18.01.310, discuss the site-specific development plans that are subject to vested property rights, including the approved final PUD, approved conditional use site plan, or an approved final subdivision plat. As we discussed before, this parcel also would have to adhere to Woodmore Water and Sanitation District, and they will provide the water and wastewater services for the development within Monument Junction and existing surrounding uses, including the, include the YMCA, I-25 vacant land to the south, and the remainder of the undevelopment Monument Junction parcel on the side of Jackson Creek Parkway. This map gives, or the sketch gives a little bit more detail on Lot Four in the preliminary final PUD, Lot Four of the Monument Junction West filing, number one subdivision, as we discussed, access from Fat Tire Drive and Laughing Lab Way, some unique street names there for the area. Adequate stacking on site for the long-term traffic, as well as adequate stacking both internally and on Laughing Lab and Fat Tire to accommodate the anticipated vehicle volume without impacting Jackson Creek Parkway. This is all part of a traffic control plan that Ms. Barlow was referencing earlier. Long-term on-site stacking is 44 vehicles, while the event stacking allows for well over 60 vehicles. This was scrutinized more because of the fact that it is a new restaurant coming to Colorado. So there is expected to be more interest in that, at least in the initial, initial days of its opening. As discussed prior, the comprehensive plan document that outlines aspirational goals for the town, and the staff looked at this to see that the proposals, proposals are conforming to the, at least most of the comprehensive plan, as we've just discussed here. Sometimes the, the policies within the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan can seem to contradict one another. So we have to look at it from a macro perspective to see if overall it's conforming with different aspects of the plan. In this case, as discussed with the previous proposal, this, this proposed use allows for a wider array of land use types to meet changing community needs as Monument continues to grow. This fast food restaurant will help meet the changing needs of the community and new residential development in the adjacent areas. It will be easily accessible from Jackson Creek Parkway. Another policy, promote infill development on vacant land with attention to the vacant or underutilized land in and around the downtown core. Monument Junction will provide additional infill development of currently underutilized land in Monument. Next policy, protect adjacent residential areas from adverse noise, glare, and the visual impacts of parking and loading related to non-residential development. This site is not adjacent to any existing residential areas. Yet, there will be appropriate separation from the multifamily development plan to the south. The proposed residential to the east is separated by Jackson Creek Parkway and open space tract and landscaping. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the Burger Works Monument Ridge Preliminary Final PUD based on the findings that the preliminary final PD is in conformance with the review and approval criteria in the Town of Monument's Land Development Code, Section 18 dot 03 dot 450 and 18 dot 03 dot 460. As outlined in the previous presentation, the same entitlement process, which focuses on what has been approved prior, which includes a sketch plan from June 15, 2020, and as discussed here, the plat approved February 7, 2022 by the Board of Trustees. As in the last presentation, and as Ms. Barlow will outline, the criteria here to review and approve the, this PUD is referenced in these sections that I just discussed, 18.03.450 and 18.03.460. That's for the final PUD. I'm just going through those quickly, since I know we're not going to be reading all that, but it's similar to what we just went through for Lot Five in the previous presentation. And that is staff's presentation. I will call up the applicant's presentation next.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Andrea Barlow again, representing the applicant Burger Works. Background, we are representing Burger Works on multiple sites within Colorado Springs area. The first opening of their facility in Interquest happened in February this year, and they are opening multiple, multiple other locations. A property on Dublin Boulevard was opened at the end of last month. On Constitution and Avenue, they have a project due to open in November. And then next year, a site on Garden, the Gardens will open in the first quarter, and in the second quarter, a site on Montebello, and kind of on the South Academy area, and on Fillmore will open in the second quarter. So six new locations within Colorado Springs for Whataburger and Monument Junction. A location is proposed to open in the third quarter of 2023. So with that, my presentation is going to be abbreviated, because as I said, there's quite a lot of overlap with the other plan, other presentations, so I'll skip over most of that. So the site is Lot Four, which is just to the north of the apartments which we were just discussing. Next slide. The zoning, you familiar with that now, was originally PCD. Next slide. It was rezoned in 2020 to PD and then changed to PUD. Next slide. The review criteria, we went through these previously, I won't reiterate them, but they're there for consideration. Some of these apply more to residential type land uses, but there are, the majority of them also apply equally to non-residential. Next slide. So the approved sketch plan, the area in red there was identified as commercial office service, and Mr. Snow identified the types of uses that would include restaurant uses such as the Whataburger. And so that was an anticipated use, not only on the sketch plan, it was an anticipated use that was analyzed in the traffic study. Next slide. So it is, the, the location of the site is, is changed slightly. As we discussed previously, there was a switch around with the commercial and the multifamily, but staff considered that when the plat was approved earlier this year, staff considered that to be generally in accordance with the sketch plan, and that was approved as being in accordance with sketch plan when the plat was approved in February by planning commission and the board. So this 1.79 acre parcel is the area we are considering. Next slide. So just a little bit of information, there, there's a single-story building proposed in pretty much in the center of the site, parking adjacent to it, and traffic circulation around. The building setback identified there is at 25 feet, but as you can see that the building is set back much further along Jackson Creek Parkway than the actual minimum setback identified. And there are setbacks along Laughing Lab and Fat Tire, and there are easements around the property as well. The maximum building height is set at 40 feet, but the building is not that tall. I'll talk about that in a second. Next slide. So here we have the building elevation. We're at around 20 feet, I think, I believe, flames. Yeah, yeah, 20, 20 feet to the highest point of the building. And these are the side views. Next slide. And this is the front view, so it's primarily a building. It does have the Whataburger symbol on there, which is their trademark. And next slide. So we talked about the road improvements. I'm not going to reiterate things that we discussed earlier, just going to want to touch briefly on what's happening at the intersections serving the Whataburgers. So next slide. And so you can see on that north section is Laughing Lab with star is where the site is. That will be a right-in, right-out only intersection. If you go to the next slide, you can see that the Fat Tire Drive is proposed for movement intersection. That's where the traffic signals will be. So right in, right out on Laughing Lab Way and full movement at Fat Tire. So there will be deceleration lanes for turning right at both of those intersection, and then a northbound left turn lane at the proposed traffic, future traffic signal at Fat Tire Drive. Next slide. So one of the things that we were asked to consider by staff was how traffic would be managed, particularly on the opening day. I think there was quite, probably quite a lot of reporting on the traffic congestion as when the Interquest store opened. Bear in mind that, that was the first Whataburger in Colorado or in this area, the first ever. So it's kind of similar as the, when the In-N-Out Burger opened, there was a lot of traffic queuing. That lasted a few days, but they have learned from that. Well, when I say a few days, about three days. For, for the Whataburger, I'm not talking about the In-N-Out Burger. For the Whataburger, it lasted about three days. I will talk about some contrast between that site and this site. But as I noted when I started, there are going to be six other Whataburgers opened in Colorado Springs by the time this, this store here is scheduled to open. So the, the demand will have dissipated and spread to the other locations. So we're not anticipating at this particular location such a high influx of people on the opening day. So the streets obviously will be installed before the Whataburger can open. So the streets will be constructed by the master developer. There are going to be wayfinding signs. So there's going to be a sign from, these are temporary signs on the off-ramp of I-25, and then also on 105 to direct traffic to the south, and then also on Jackson Creek for traffic heading north. So just general wayfinding signs from, from a broader perspective, so people know how to get there, because sometimes you can see something, but you don't know, always know how to get there on the most direct route, or have a general idea of where it is. Next slide. So regarding the specifics of the plan, this is, this is, this plan is to control the drive-through traffic. If people want to just come into the site and park and, and go to the store, that they, they will be directed slightly differently to this. But the S's represent, there will be security, there will be onsite security at each of the entrances of Fat Tire and Laughing Lab. And the incoming traffic will be directed to the entrance at the Fat Tire entrance. So the reason for that is because there is internal stacking. So the internal stacking is 860 feet. That is compared to the 416 feet that was available at Interquest. So it's more than double the amount of internal stacking. And that's represented by the green line inside the property. So they have a stacking lane around the perimeter. And also, unlike Interquest, this, this site, and it's the only one that has three drive-through lanes. So it has three drive-through lanes compared to two at Interquest, so that will accommodate much more traffic. And then in addition to that, there is, bearing in mind that by the time this opens, it will, let's assume for now, the apartments are going ahead, it will, this will probably open before the apartments are developed, developed. So it's, it's going to be the only development probably served off these streets when they're constructed initially, when it opens. So there will be stacking, there's 350 feet of stacking also along Fat Tire Drive. So people will be directed to get in that queue and, and come around. So there's a lot more capacity here for stacking and queuing than there was at the Interquest site. Plus, as I noted, that there will be multiple other locations open by then, so that, that, that initial demand will, will have dissipated. And then everybody will be directed on leaving the site to go to that south access on, on Fat Tire and exit at the intersection, the full movement intersection. So considerable thought was given to this. The applicant is online if, if you want to have any questions regarding the, the operational management of the opening day, opening week, and, but they will have their onsite security and move people around. And it gets to a point where they, they realize, okay, this, this initial rush has died down, and then they will take the security away gradually as when they realize there's no need for them anymore. Next slide. Comprehensive plan, again, a mix of use. The entirety of Monument Junction was approved as a mixed-use development. And I'm going to respond a little bit to the previous comments by saying, with the mix of development that was shown on the sketch plan, which was pri- with the mix of development that was shown on the sketch plan, which was primarily residential. The elements of commercial on the sketch plan that was approved were the five acre portion and then with like a four-point acre portion of mixed use. So the majority of the Monument Junction site has always been planned with no attempt to hide it as primarily residential. Not, and that was approved against the background of the 2017 comprehensive plan. So with that plan in mind, this plan was approved. So the intent has always been that it would be a majority of residential to support the commercial. All commercial requires residential. Commercial will not move to Monument if there are not rooftops to support it. So I know there's often been aspirations in Monument to have great commercial. You need the residential, you need the rooftops, you need the multifamily residential and everything that will support that commercial. Next slide. Various policies, there are multiple policies in the plan actually that are focused much more on commercial development, capitalizing on the three interchanges for destination, sales tax-producing land uses. That's exactly what this is. This is a destination. This will be somewhere where people will come to Monument for the Whataburger and it will be a sales tax-producing land use. It's not necessarily highway oriented, but it's certainly a traffic. We're not denying that it will generate traffic. I mean, it was accounted for in the traffic study. But being located at the intersection of the highway is the best place for it. And also helps to continue to promote Monument as a business and shopping and service hub for the Tri-Lakes region. Next slide. So in summary, we believe this is entirely in keeping with the sketch plan, anticipated restaurants. This fits that use category. It's consistent with the Lot Four, the Lot Floor of the Plats, which was approved earlier this year. It's consistent with the intent of the mixed use, which was the basis for the sketch plan approval. The intersection improvements will be provided and the internal rows will be provided by the master developer and we'll be constructing those interim improvements for the intersections. And the developer of Lot Four of Whataburger will be providing private security to help with opening week traffic. There was a comment which I'll quickly address, which was made in the last item, which seemed to relate to the Whataburger. There are no proposed freestanding signs with the Whataburger. They have the signage on the building that is their trademark, that is their brand, and that's how they promote themselves. They will not be having a freestanding sign. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. And at this point, we'll just have you take a break and we'll turn to the public for any comments or questions that you have. Similar to before, just come on up. We'll limit again to three minutes and let's do this.
Joanne Farrell, 2196 Creek Valley. I want to make sure I understand. So is this going to open before the four-lane intersection is completed? Because now with the two-lane, you sit there through so many lights. And I'm not opposed to the Whataburger. I'm just opposed to this whole design plan without the city doing the interchange first. Because I can't imagine having everything, the Whataburger, the apartments, and then doing the road. It's such a mess now, like to tear it up after everything goes in. I don't know if it's the city's planning or the builder's planning are together, but I think that that intersection and the finishing of the four-lane should be done before anything opens up.
Thank you. Let's keep rolling here. Go ahead, yeah.
Kind of just piggybacking on the traffic scene, saw there was a mass exodus after the last one. I, I'm not opposed to a Whataburger either. It's not my preference, but I don't really care. I am concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned again that Jackson Creek Parkway is only so big and it is not Powers Boulevard. And adding stoplights doesn't move traffic, it stops traffic. And we're already backed up. So I would like to challenge the Planning Commission to try to find other ways to get the traffic in and out of these businesses that we want to put there. That isn't going to be a traffic light at every block. That's just going to stop us all along. That's my biggest concern. And it would be nice if there were bigger trees. I don't really want to look at the Whataburger, but I don't mind eating there once in a while.
Thank you. All right. And just for further clarification, I think it's clear that traffic is a concern. So anyone wanting to make that comment, it's heard loud and clear. And I think the applicant has at least addressed that initially. But as far as any other public comments, please.
Doug Stempel, 1615 St. Lawrence Way. My question for the applicant, and thank you for clarifying that there's no freestanding sign. I appreciate that. Is that what the building is going to look like? Or is it going to be like some of the other ones that you see in other states, the orange and white, which would be like an eyesore for the town of Monument? And I referenced the work that was done years ago when they put the pilot station in to keep in mind the theme of Monument, that, that small town, brick, stone looking building. There's a lot of work that went into that, so some of you were on the panel to negotiate. So I'm just wondering the design plan, the colors, and then also the drive-through where the two, it's going to go northbound. So you're going to have those two drive-through signs, the menus. I'm just worried about just consideration of the light pollution that's going to go across the street that the residents are going to see if they're sitting on their decks or their balconies or whatever, to make sure that there's ample screening where you see the green, the bushes, that they're going to be tall enough to block that light pollution. That's my consideration to wonder about, thanks.
Thank you. We'll keep coming with public comments, yes, please.
I'll be extremely brief. Doug Stempel, Classic Homes, Monument resident. And point of clarification on the traffic from earlier. The interim Jackson Creek Parkway Improvement Subdivision Improvement Agreement is recorded and the bond is posted. So we already have our bond up, so I just wanted to be there.
Thank you.
And, and because I think it's important, given tonight, to establish a record. Mr. Trujillo, when you ran into Mr. Marland earlier today and indicated that you are coming after us tonight, were you referring to the apartments only or the apartments and this application as well?
Well, so just as, we'll entertain the.
I would like to make the record.
You can make the record, but in terms of the Q and A to the commissioners, we'll address afterwards. This is the public comment portion of this.
That was my public comment.
Thank you. All right. We'll keep going with the public comment, yes.
Hey, Robin Wright, 19814 Dewa Drive. And I really appreciate the president, CEO and counsel and all the information you've given. It's probably the most information that, that I've heard in, in these commissions and will be at the, the board next. The only consideration I was going to say is being here since 2003 and living in Monument, there has been discussions of we want to change it and not be a truck stop town. And a fast food Whataburger is kind of like a truck stop town. I mean, it's a little, it's upscale, but people jump off the highway. So they jump off the highway, they get a quick burger and they jump back on. And us, and I represent a lot of different people talking in the communities. I own a gym in Monument, so a business owner. We would have loved to have a microbrew or a sit-down or something that's, you know, kind of with the community and the passerby's, they keep going, you know, down the road and don't jump off the highway necessarily. And the community comes and, and people that are coming, you know, from around distant places because there's a lot of sports here, you get a lot of families that are coming and use that. So that's just consideration, not shooting down the Whataburger. But if it was more of a sit-down type place, I think it would gather a different clientele. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Further public comments from the public. All right, I'm going to go ahead and look online. I see a couple of hands raised. And let's see, Drew, can you move Ryan to the presenter forum?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, moving up now.
Thank you. All right, Ryan, go ahead and unmute and go ahead.
Good evening. As everybody knows, I'm Ryan LeVere. I'm a citizen of Monument and retired Army soldier that was previously signed to Four Hood, Texas and a resident of Copper's Cove, Texas. I love Whataburger and when Copper's Cove got its Whataburger in 2014, it brought great joy to my stomach. When I learned that Monument might be getting a Whataburger, I got excited once again. However, comparing Copper's Cove location to the Monument location, I have some concerns. While Monument is 1.31 acres and Copper's Cove is 0.95, 0.959 acres, Copper's Cove does not have any ornamental landscaping restrictions and Copper's Cove can spill over into other businesses. And Copper's Cove is surrounded by other towns with other Whataburger restaurants. The location here in Monument is a tiny space and can't support the traffic and interest that this location will generate. Lastly, Whataburger has not developed Colorado, a Colorado specific menu. We pride ourselves on our Pablo Chilis. However, Whataburger continues to market their New Mexico Hatch Chili Burgers. I recommend some serious conditions on this ordinance. Lastly, thank you to N E S and Andrea Barlow for their encouraging alcoholism by naming the streets after beers instead of normal street names like Oak, Pine or Aspen. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And we'll move, let's see, Jeremy to the presenter, let's see, presenter area, yes, okay. Okay, Jeremy, go ahead, unmute.
All right, can you hear me, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. So Jeremy Franti, 921 Caribou, I'm a resident of Monument. And so I, I'm looking at the design plan for the Whataburger and I'm going to sort of add into or, or add to some of the feedback given by some of the previous residents and say that one thing that is most desirable about Monument is the view. And another thing is the, I would say that something that has fallen very short in Monument is restaurants and venues taking advantage of that view. So really in this corridor and the vantage point on the outside of the hook, it really lends itself to the views to the south. Probably, I would suspect that Pike's Peak is viewable. Looks like there's some sort of crosswalk that crosses over the top of the drive-through lane to like a dining area, but there's only like four tables. As I understand it, this is like right across from the high school as well. So I would suspect that kids are probably going to cross the street at lunch periods and go eat lunch at the Whataburger. And I would say that the, the outside dining venue probably falls short of what you could fill. So I think if, if a suggestion to the Whataburger would be incorporate more outside dining or entertaining areas to families because.
Jeremy, if you can wrap up, your three minutes is up.
That is something that is desirable in the town of Monument. So from a planning standpoint or from an incorporation standpoint, I do support the notion and the idea of Whataburger. I just think that some of the architectural elements and dining elements should be, or could be added to. I'd like to see that in the design, but I do support a Whataburger being in Monument.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have, it looks like William. Drew, if you can move him up and then we'll get him going.
Absolutely, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. Thanks, Drew.
Sorry.
All right, William, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Tamangia and I'm the franchise owner operator of Burger Works, the, the franchise coming to this location. And, and I really appreciate everyone's consideration tonight. And, and, and for those supporting, I really appreciate it. We are, we are obviously extremely excited to be joining the community. And, and when, when we say we're joining a, a community, it's, it's not to just serve burgers out of four walls. We, we look to be involved in schools with reading programs and, and, and all, all sorts of organizations across the town and really become a piece of the fabric of a community. And, and this site for us is, is a crown jewel in, in, in our, our cap that really will allow us to, to serve everyone in all shapes and forms with outdoor dining. I know it shows four seats, but we really, we really look to, to have, have a great experience both, both indoor and outdoor dining. I know there's, there was a lot of, a lot of media about our opening in Interquest and, and certainly that was fun, but we, we just opened on Dublin and we never queued off-site. And so while we always prepare for it, we are, we are ready for any situation with an opening. As you all have seen with this, we've already started to think about it. The, the amount of onsite queuing that we have here is, is pretty much unprecedented for us. And so, so I, I think from a traffic standpoint, we will be able to accommodate even, even the busiest times. And, and, you know, we, we will be creating really good jobs and, and just, you know, I, I really think that, I, I hope that y'all appreciate us becoming a part of the community and, and we, we really look forward to it. And, and for the comment about green chilies.
William, just so I know, we're past three minutes, but go ahead and finish up.
Okay. For the comment about green chilies, starting next year, we'll, we'll be able to, to make that happen. So thank, thank you for your time and your consideration and look, look forward to, to meeting you all in person soon.
All right, thank you, William. Okay, I don't see any more hands, at least new hands, raised online. So I'll go back to the public here. I don't see anyone looking to make a comment. So with that, I will close the public comments portion. And I will move to, let's see, well, actually, before I do that, I'll allow the applicant to go ahead and make some comments to what they heard.
Yes, I, I really just want to clarify a few things because I think we kind of talked about the traffic enough with the last comments. So I'm not sure I need to go there again. There were some questions about the landscaping. Get cited about landscaping. The trees will be at mature height about 30 to 45 feet. So they are, they're going to be fairly substantial and there's going to be shrubs. And they will help to block the light pollution that was referred to from the menu boards. They've been positioned specifically there to provide that screening. We have to provide certain screening for that menu boards and for parked cars and so on. You might notice that the left-hand side of the, the picture is that the west side is, is a bit depleted of landscaping. That's because that's an M V E A easement, an electric easement, and they don't allow any trees or shrubs in their easements. So we're a bit constrained there, but we, we've tried to make it up on the other side. I do want to clarify that the, the site is 1.79 acres. I think there was some reference of it being a little smaller than that. And, and as a result of that, we've actually been able to incorporate a seating area. Usually the sites are a lot smaller and a little bit more constrained and don't have the opportunity. So we're happy to be able to be, be able to provide that in this case. And regarding the street names, we didn't have any say in the street names, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
I think they're rather good, personally. But yeah, so any other questions?
Okay. So at this time, I will close the public comments portions, but please stay. And at least from the commissioner's perspective, any immediate questions, comments you'd like to make to the applicant? Yeah, Kathy?
Just wanted to talk about design guidelines. This would have been so much easier for me to review had it had design guidelines. I had no color, everything's in black and white. That's a huge part of PUD and it was extremely frustrating. I'm sorry if it was not required or asked for in your application, but it is very much a part of the review. So let's go through that just a little bit because I have a teeny weeny picture. It's the only color picture I have. It's stone or is that tile?
I believe the material's stone. Brick, I thought it brick, yeah.
Like a blonde brick?
It's, it's actually.
Okay. And it looks like a kind of a mansard roof?
Yes, it's, it, well, it's not. Yes, it's, it, well, it's no, it's, it's a parapet around a flat roof.
Okay, and, and what's that material? Not, not the parapet, but the, the actual?
I, I think it's metal. William may be able to uh, comment on that, William, can you talk a little bit more about the materials of the building? Uh, and while he's kind of connecting, I will make a, there was a, a question, I think it was Mr. Kimpel asked about uh, is this the elevation, is this what, what you see is what you get? Yes, I, I mean, I emphasize this is a final P U D plan, so what, what you see, and that, that kind of goes to the design guidelines comment because this is a final, this is what you see is what you get.
So we're going to get this building, and, and just to make sure um, going backwards, Home Depot was not allowed to put their bright orange stripe around their building, it's a muted orange. Uh, Freedom Car Wash came in and said, we muted our colors. Ducky Car Wash or whatever it is has to mute their colors as they did. Are these, I mean, these are not the bright orange and white plasticine orange I see on the internet?
So I think that I, I, again, I, maybe William can confirm that, William, he's got his hand up, he's uh
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, William.
I can, I can chime in on that, so, so this, this new building, the, the, the lighter brick around the icon entrance and then the darker brick uh, as the main brick, as a, for instance, for architectural guidelines. In, at InterQuest, we used a red brick as the main brick and a uh, a reddish uh, stone around the icon entrance that was, that, that was, you know, used throughout the development to, to become uh, uh, you know, unified with the development. And so, so those are, those are pieces that we will adjust depending on what fits where, where we're going. And, and the top band is a, is a uh, uh, coated, powder-coated corrugated metal. Um, and, and, and the orange and white that you're thinking about on the, the classic Whataburger A-frame, um, those orange and white stripes are not part of the new prototype design.
Thank you.
Just a few questions, um, the depiction here has essentially the completed Jackson Creek Parkway.
It does, yes.
Is that what would be in place before Whataburger would open?
I, I think we, I think that's the intent is that that will be constructed and down to Fat Tire prior to the Whataburger note. Okay, Doug needs to come and talk about this then because uh, I will get myself in a knot if I, if I try to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
If all the, Doug Stempel, if all the approvals were in place and we could construct it, we would, I don't think it's feasible. I just want to be transparent, I don't think it's feasible that it would be open if they're trying to open by summer of twenty-three. I really don't think our improvements could be done by that. I do believe that we could get the right-in off of one oh five that goes eastbound and make that right turn lane, designated right turn lane onto Jackson Creek and probably have that continuous lane for a turn lane into the Whataburger as well as a merge back into existing Jackson Creek. But I don't want to leave here tonight suggesting to you that all of that improvements can be done. Those, those are going to be staged, as I said, the bond's posted, but those are going to be staged as, as allowable over a period of time.
Okay, thank you. And possibly some follow-up, just coming uh, from the south to the north, that would be just a dedicated left turn lane? It's not, it's not going to be a traffic light or that would be?
That, that, at that particular, there's one that's going to be a full movement interchange at Fat Tire. Everything else is, everything else is right.
Right, 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 okay. Yeah, thanks.
Joe Loyd, Classic Homes, um, something to add to that, and I can't really tell from this picture or not, but we actually have uh, interim improvements designed for Jackson Creek Parkway for that intersection where Fat Tire is. And you can kind of tell it on there, it's as, so that may, that Fat Tire intersection will be completed first. Then we're going to work our way and go north to tie into one oh five because we can get the Jackson, this section approved by you, by the town. And we're working with F H U to get that part done. So we'll do those improvements first, reroute traffic around it. And then, once we get the approvals from C dot in the county, we'll be able to do the intersection at one oh five. And this interim improvements here will be in place first, so kind of a two-step for us. Um, and basically because of approvals.
Understood, okay, thank you. And thanks for Andrea. Is this going to be open twenty-four hours? And if so, is there an idea that there will need to be parking, uh, let's see, parking lights on? It's not just from the building and there, and its own lighting, but also parking?
Yes, so it will, I, the plan is to, it will be open twenty-four hours as far as I'm aware. Um, and uh, there will be parking lot lighting, but per, per the town standards, it has to be all down, down lighting. And so it's meeting the town's lighting standards.
Okay, got it. Those are all the questions I have immediately.
Andrea, a quick question for you, the Martin Trujillo, uh, Vice Chair. The question I have for you is an average employee's salary, month, hour, hourly salary, working at Whataburger, what would it be?
I, I would have to defer to William on that.
Does William have that for us?
Yes, he will, he will do, I'm sure. William, do you have that information?
Sure, so, so I, I would say the average is, is probably around twenty dollars an hour and, and up into the six figures.
Okay, so twenty dollars an hour for an entry-level individual that's going to be working at Whataburger. Uh, what is a supervisor roughly, William, can you tell me that?
Sure, I, I mean, without, without getting too, too personal on it, um, you know, our, our average in the, in the restaurant is about twenty dollars an hour with, with management getting uh, well into six figures.
All right, and I, I'm just trying to establish the individual aspect of the, that city, obviously. Uh, the bringing in a Whataburger restaurant, obviously, we want to have employment for our residents within the city of Monument or the town of Monument. Just trying to figure out what that criteria is. At a twenty-four-hour operation across the board and most of the residents that will be employed there, we're just trying to get an establishment of what it's going to be for those individuals in the area. Uh, so I just wanted to get that for the record, but definitely that was my first question. My next question is, as I travel northbound on I twenty-five, past exit number one fifty-eight, there's a chain-up sign. That chain-up sign is obviously for the road conditions on I twenty-five in the corridor. Semi goes past Baptist due to the fact of the actual truck stops there and has to turn around. Is that road conditions on Jackson Creek, if they do have to turn around and go for the, because they have the roadblock there with C dot? Um, if they go up to one oh five and they do, would that construction on Jackson Creek, would that include transport or would it be graded or improved for those semi trucks that drive that corridor on Jackson Creek? I guess that's more of a question for staff than it is for Andrea.
Can you ask that question one more time? I, I didn't understand.
If they have to turn around on I twenty-five due to the fact of road conditions going northbound on I twenty-five due to snow.
Mm-hmm.
They pass the road, the bar's not down, they have to turn around because the road is closed. If they turn around on one oh five and they have to come back on Jackson Creek to get back to the truck stop for their long-term parking because they can't long-term park on I twenty-five due to snow conditions. Will the roadway allow for heavy traffic for heavy semis on Jackson Creek with those improvements? Is there a difference?
At full buildout?
Yes, sir.
Yes, at full buildout, it will, it'll be, it'll, it'll be a full, four-lane divided quarter.
Okay.
From, from
Anticipation of what time?
Twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, perfect. All I got.
I, I would just add to that, that all, all roads really are designed to, certainly collectors and above are designed to accommodate heavier traffic vehicles such as trucks. But in the scenario you're talking about, I would think it's more likely that they would turn left and just get back on the highway on the, on ramp on the opposite side.
Correct, and obviously, I'm not a, I'm not a traffic guy, I'm just, again, I noticed on several occasions, as I pull off on Baptist to go to my location in Promontory Point. When I do that, one of the things that I do notice is, is that when there is an accident in between I, uh, I, exit number one fifty-eight and one oh five, everything gets bogged down, which means the traffic will either deter off of one fifty-eight to go to Old Denver Highway or to Jackson Creek, which is now going to cause that collector to become even more congested. So again, it, it, it's always going to be an issue, I'm not a traffic guy, the traffic guy says it's acceptable. You know, again, I leave that back to the town when the residents start complaining, um, that's going to be an issue.
I, I mean, the traffic, traffic reports tend to uh, assess, well, they don't tend to, they assess peak hour traffic. So they assess what's happening on a regular basis, that peak hour traffic. They don't really account for these one-off events of um, traffic accidents that cause congestions on other road. I mean, that happens anywhere at any time and it really can't be factored into
As Mr. Kimpel had identified, it needed to be for the record, that's in fact what I'm doing as well.
Okay, thank you.
And so, um, Commissioner Hours, he has his hand up.
Yes.
Andrew, Andrew, you might get taxed with the question.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Hours.
Can you hear me?
I can, we can.
Commissioner Hours, uh, my question is on the traffic control when you do open, uh, uh, even though you're not expecting uh, high traffic at the intersection of Jackson Creek Parkway and the left turn into, uh, let me get this street right this time, flat.
Fat Tire?
Fat Tire Drive, I messed that up one time before, if you recall. Will, will the local police be controlling that left turn lane?
I don't believe the local police will be um, uh, involved in any traffic control relating to the opening of the Whataburger. The Whataburger will be having its own onsite security. Um, that will guide traffic uh, at the entrance points, they can only do that at the site entrance, they can't control traffic, obviously, on the public streets. But I don't think there's any need for or intent for the uh, police department to be involved in that.
Well, I would, I would ask the uh, town manager who happens to be there to take a close look, close look at that because you're going to have traffic coming that